Madam Clerk, if you please, in the room call.
Bell?
Here.
Buffer?
Here.
DeBarry?
Here.
Gillum?
Here.
Granton?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Kennamore?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
Lanier?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Pope?
Here.
Same?
Here.
Vickers?
Here.
Wayne? Wright?
Here.
And, uh, real quick, we do have a full house tonight. We want to make sure our microphones are working correctly. And I'm going to ask the commissioners if you would please speak into your microphone. We want everyone to be able to to, uh, hear what the commissioners are saying. And, uh, if you can't, please give me a sign, if you would. Just be careful which finger you use. It'll be a thing. But anyway, let's, uh... Y'all have it in the, uh, in your packet, the minutes, uh, from November. Of course, we've had a long break and, um, I hope that everyone has had a chance to look at the minutes from our November, uh, meeting, November fifteenth. If everyone has had a chance to review those as their motion to accept the minutes from November meeting, please.
I have one for extra, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, in the budget amendment section. The Department of Commerce here, officer, good morning. The question is, David, from the Department, we got a typo that says seven hundred and twenty-three thousand eight forty-four. That amount should be seventy-three thousand eight forty-four.
Seventy-three, eight forty-four, zero, six?
Zero, zero.
Zero, zero? Okay, there's a typo on there. Okay, as amended, is there a motion to approve those minutes as amended?
So moved.
So, yes, sir. Uh, please, uh, since that was great, let's have a, uh, let's have a little call vote, please.
Bell?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
DeBarry?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Granton?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Present. I mean, yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Same?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Okay. Motion carries. They are approved. And before we do this, uh, I do want to make it clear, tonight, before we adopt this agenda, we, we have a couple of things on the, on our agenda tonight, and we're going to have to move into two separate public hearings. And how this is going to work, we're going to address one, and, and then it will be a public hearing, we'll convene back. And then when we do the other, we'll move back into another public hearing, because there's two different items that we have to address. So I want to make sure that everyone understands that. Yes, and we have two sign-up sheets, uh, here, I believe, here on the front desk, here by Madam Clerk. Uh, one for the slaughterhouse issue, if you'd like to speak. And the other is for, uh, the zoning, I believe, or so, is that correct? And we have that one as well. So both of these sheets are here if you'd like to speak. And if you would sign those sheets, and, uh, and then you will come up, when your name is called, come up to the podium and speak. All right, if I could have a motion, uh...
Mr. Chair, question, when is the next, uh, public hearing? When is the first?
Uh, it will be, of course, tonight.
Yes, I mean, when on the agenda here?
Yeah, we're, um, it will be into, uh, into the new business, yeah.
All right, where would be the second one? That's the first one, correct?
Yeah, we've got two within that.
Two within the right?
Yeah, within that, and we're going to the, uh, something. Yeah.
Todd?
Yes, sir.
I'm missing one from the packet.
Okay.
Any more extra facts?
Yes, Chris, do we have another? Okay.
Pardon?
Yeah, you, uh, you didn't have that on yours? This is what happened, okay. You have that, uh, you have, you have your agenda there.
Yeah, I got, I got it, okay.
Okay, very good. If we could, let's have a motion to adopt the agenda, if we could, please.
So moved.
Is your second?
Second.
All in favor? Please signify. All opposed? All right, moving on down, we have the appointments and committees. Uh, if you have those members, uh, for our nine-one-one board, for our budget committee, and for our industrial, if you've had a chance to look at those, please. And we also have a number here. Madam Chair, uh, Madam Clerk, is that correct on your, on the notice that you put in?
Yep.
All right, if we, if you'd like to go through those, if you'd like to go through those, we just need a confirmation on our, on our appointments. We can do those all together, or if you'd like to take it separately, whatever you'd like to do. And make the most, right here, yes, sir.
Could you tell us how many, there's made, please, on the, on the board?
Yes, I believe it is, um, maybe twelve. Twelve, yes. And I have all those on file, Commissioner.
I move that we take them separate items, please.
Okay. All right, we have, first, we have the, uh, the nine-one-one board. This is reapportment for Sheriff Doolan, uh, reapportment for Mr. Plunk, Randy Plunk. And, um, I talked to nine-one-one, they needed representatives from the fire department. So I had, uh, put Lynn Price, and I made Lynn Price. Is there any questions? If not, could I have a motion to accept them, please?
So, second.
Um, there's a second, there's a first and a second. And is there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor for our nine-one-one board, please signify the same.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and that was approved. Now, uh, if we could, on the bottom of this page, you'll see our budget committee. Each year, we are supposed to appoint first of the year, uh, budget committee. And we have here, of course, you have three commissioners in two, uh, the Johnny Lanier, Commissioner Lanier, Commissioner Jackie Same, Commissioner Bobby Hensley. And, uh, we have Richard Clark and Sharon Merton.
I make the motion to approve budget minute as documented.
You have the first, and is there a second, please?
Second.
Second. All right, any discussion on those? If we could, please, uh, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to a vote. All those in favor for our budget committee, please signify the same.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we need to move into our industrial, the next one. We have two more, the industrial board members, and then we have notaries as well, so... As you see before, you have those in staggered terms. If you have a chance to look at those members. All right, if there's any, uh, no questions, it's, would I, I would like to retain a motion, it's a motion to accept it. Accept our members.
So...
Motion here, second, please.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will move into a vote. All those in favor for accepting our members, please, for our industrial board, please signify the same.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
Aye.
And so noted, as a commission. Okay. All right, motion passed. Now, we have, uh, our notaries for January of twenty-twenty-three.
So moved, for you.
So moved, to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please signify the same.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? All right, we have that, yes. All right, now we're going to move into reports for our officials, and, um, let me see. Do we have, uh, is Dr. Smith here? Okay, Dr. Smith, do you have anything for the Board of Education? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Uh, is Casey Swift here? Okay, Mr. Swift, you know, please, sir. Superintendent Tyler.
The other thing we have tonight, I think, uh, the middle left is a piece of the wall, but there's two things on the Caporal State Contract, two pieces of equipment, one is John Dair, one is Caporal Skits here. We want to take the surplus money that we sold our equipment in off in October and move that money into equipment. But, uh, the money, the budget amendment we did to move that money into its right place got messed up, so it went into one thirty, it's at one thirty-one. So we're preparing a budget amendment, and we're presenting the guy next meeting for approval on that. But what we want to do is get approval to be able to purchase one of those, the equipment, Skits here. So that's why we have, uh, two copies, uh, of equipment. But I don't have anything right now. We'll do the budget amendment next month, because it's not prepared yet, so...
Okay, we have done it tonight, you...
Well, no, I mean, looking at, I want to do approval on, uh, being able to purchase one of those, the equipment. Like I said, we got one hundred and sixteen thousand eighteen from our equipment sale, and, uh, how we want, we want to move that money into equipment to be able to purchase one of these. I don't have the budget amendment right off, it's not pre-confirmed.
You said one hundred and sixteen thousand?
There's one hundred and sixteen thousand eighteen that we sold off, equipment and how we want to hold equipment.
All right, so we're looking at, uh, John Dair and I can't?
Yes, that's right. Because they're both on state contracts, so I mean, I don't have to get approval for purchasing, because they're on state contract, but I mean, I, I'm just trying to do all the right steps, sorry.
You just want to do the amendment next, next month?
We can, because since that money went budget into the budget, I can get credit, just spend it now.
So I'll just wait and do it, you know? All right, but I just, that's something that may be out and over until, until next month.
Thank you, Mr. Swift, appreciate you. Uh, Sheriff Doolan, Sheriff Doolan, do you have a report from Sheriff's Department, please? Uh, Mr. Moore, do you have anything to the front? Chief, thank you, Moore, my phone. Um, okay, we have, um, is Amber, is Amber here, Amber Moore? Okay, is Amber, would you?
May.
Yes, sir.
I have a, Sheriff, a question.
Yes, sir.
Litter?
Litter?
I'm here. Uh, we're doing great. Uh, actually, uh, he had to take off, uh, I, I've got the guy that's employed to do it. He had to take off a couple of days last week, uh, his wife coming to the hospital. Uh, so I know the first month we picked up, uh, over twenty-two thousand pounds of garbage.
Over twenty-two thousand pounds?
Yes.
Did you pick it?
Yes, that was the first month.
Yes, sir.
I don't have a total, I can't right now.
Hey, you know what roads don't work there?
What roads don't work, that you picked up? Uh, I do not write up off the top of my head. Uh, we kind of jump around place to place. Uh, I know you picked up Lake Harbin last week, uh, or part of Lake Harbin, uh, that's why I've got to say he was actually working on that. Um, I know, um...
Is that on Van Durin?
Van Durin, um, has got totally picked up. Um, Mark Swain has got picked up, Smith Road, uh, there's, there's several, there's several roads that have been picked up. Uh, but it, you know, it's just, it's a rotating, rotating.
And too, can I add, Commissioner, uh, and Sheriff, please term me correctly, if I'm wrong with this, you can't put out the area that you'll be in, at different times, for, for the privacy issue, for different reasons.
No, I, that's more of a safety and a security reason, so that the employee pretty much don't even know until they go anywhere he's going.
In, in advantage, you can put out.
No.
Question, if you want employee, how many trustees this, this morning, you had?
Three names.
Three. Three.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you. Miss Amber, my office, you have the floor, ma'am.
As concerning all, now, a few months ago, I appeared for you, because you know that we're going to have to purchase the building of equipment. Uh, we're in the process of looking at vendor material, and we're going to do administrations for all, and that's one of them. Second, I have told you a few months ago, there was another issue that was going on with the commission that needs to be looked at and addressed. Uh, you know, we rent the building that we're in, and there are several issues, Tennessee Homeland Security came in and did a survey on things with the building. Uh, some of it can be towed, some can't, due to the fact that the election. Uh, I briefly spoke with Mr. Vaughn one morning, get charged about it. Uh, it's not so much as far as what else wants to be done, and it'd be a time-consuming issue, but we're running out of space also. Now, um, in twenty-twenty, I put over six thousand people within my office in two weeks' time. I dare say none of the election officials are very excessive, and the people. That was only one election, one election. I had three that year. So fifteen to twenty thousand people come to our office. The new equipment that we're having to look at poses a lot of things. It caught legislation passed that you have to have a paper verified trail of the votes. It's going to mean that we're going to have to do more ballots. With more ballots comes top of more security. But also leak machines because of it, there are several devices, whereas you go in now, you go on one machine, you go out the door. The machines are out there now, it's that you would have to go to the machine and you do one of two things. You're either going to put in your choices. It's going to print the ballot, you're going to look at it, and you're going to go to a scanner, run it through the scanner. Whereas we had one piece of equipment, we now have three. And as you all know, if you all back in the neighborhood before, the place is just not large enough to have in a room that many machines or that many people. Um, there are some building issues, we've got phone issues, um, where we can't figure out, AT&amp;T can't figure out, the Nids can't figure out. But a second line won't come through and one rings. They checked wiring, they've done everything. Tennessee Homeland Security did find several issues where there's water coming through the building. I can tell you that on bad rainy days, water comes up completely up on the thing. We recently had a fist through the building. Don't know how you got them to do it. But if you're scared to think about it, when you're going to the bathroom, you think you've got a snake in the bathroom with you. So we don't know how it got in there, we don't know where it came through, but it was too large. And my deputy and I, let's put it this way, if we had videos trying to get that thing out of there, we probably be rich with video that we could have posted on chat, that you... But needless to say, there's a lot of issues this has. Uh, the gentleman we rented from, it's always been superb, that's not the issue. It's just there's several things that have come up. Uh, like I said, I thought I was going to be on the agenda tonight to be able to give you more information about it. And I think it was quite a miscommunication, whatever, but I can give you an outline of things that need to be done. But you have to also consider, if you try to relocate me and completely tear off that whole building out there to make it work for us, I've got a note by every voter in this county where I'm going to be. And then I go back in the building, I got a note by every county, every person that's voted in this county, that we're back in the building. Posted alone to mail, do a mail-out, and this is only postage. This is not including the card or the letter or whatever had to go, would be sixteen thousand dollars. So we've been paying rent, I've been in the office for seventeen years. Like I said, it's, I guess it's not what you'd consider bad rent or anything like that, but in speaking briefly with Greg, he did tell me that he had to build up more. And it's, and that's perfectly understandable, you have to increase the rent. So I just want to give you something to contemplate, think about. I just want to make sure that I'm on the agenda, bring forth all the paperwork and stuff for the next month's meeting, that y'all will have it in hand. The new equipment has been in place of January of twenty-twenty-four. There's no getting any bucks out of that. I'm on the state law, of course, the best thing about that is that the machines will be paid one percent by the state of Tennessee, because legislation did force us to do it. Uh, basically that, if you now, so I mean, when you talk about relocating, you have to understand, hundred counties want to keep counties in state, Tennessee still has an election every single year. I'm getting ready to see a local election right now. So, I mean, those are thoughts, and then think about whatever questions you might have that you want to try to present, you want to comment, we have answers before we come out to the next meeting. I'll be happy to do whatever I can. But I just think it's time that we relocate. And another thing is type of security issues. We had an incident up there, we lost the building there. Somebody comes up to you, and some issues that took place, we tried to get a license plate, it was gone before I could get it. So needless to say, it has become a security issue, lots of out there. And with as many paper ballots we're going to start handling in twenty-twenty-four, and y'all know all over the United States, or read today, we're still being sued about the twenty-twenty election. So it's going to be tighter restrictions for security purposes and everything. And that's not all I got to say, if y'all got something you want to ask me now.
I have any questions for Commissioner Moore? Uh, Miss Amber, I do, just a quick question. On the building, uh, the square footage, uh, from what you're saying, what you're going to have to have, or do you have an idea?
I would all have to about them. Think I was, how, how wide the machines will be, where they're going to take place. And you have to also understand, machines have to be, it's going to be apart from each other.
Right.
So if you're talking about more machines, same footage, and then also, if the election commission chooses to go to strictly in paper thing, you've got to have pricing booths for every spot in there, for people to go and put food, print the ballots, go and scan.
Senator, this is, uh, one more question that I have, I did. What do you do at that point with the older machines? Do you turn those back into the state?
The state, that's supposed what they want to do. Sometimes companies buy them back, because there are still states that use that machine I have. The company might buy them back. But it, those machines were paid with straight rent, too, seventeen years ago.
Right.
So now they handle that, I can find out that too, Tom.
So your, your issue, you got a couple...
I'm one about spacing.
Yeah.
Clearly, this matters more than anything. I mean, I put light bulbs in the outside building, because there's no lights out there next day, my light bulbs are out there. I put light bulbs in, I definitely, my commissions are vouched for. I'm not going to have a meeting, we're going to be leaving late. Somebody's going to walk by, I'm screwed with the light bulbs. And when you're working, you know, you're just not sitting there looking at five, five times.
How much is that grant that you were talking, is that, was it two hundred?
Depending on which machine we pick, it could be anywhere, that grant could be anywhere between two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars somewhere. It just all depends on the machines, and like I said, the commission is getting ready to start doing, with reviewing them and seeing demonstrations on what they think best works for the county.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Moore? Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. All right, I believe next, we have, uh, we have some more elected officials. Um, Mr. Josh Pauls, Assistant Attorney.
The only thing I have, uh, that needs to be approved, mine is the five-year reappraisal plan. You should all have that in the packet. Same asking to get that to all this person, you need, so we can get that approved. Same thing we done in two thousand thirteen, and again, two thousand eighteen, it's a five-year reappraisal plan meeting. We will reappraise again in twenty-twenty-eight.
Does anyone have that in the packet? They do have, uh, submission values on, yeah, Dave? Josh says the resolution, authorizing the continuous time of year reappraisal cycle.
Yes. I saw you, you have, that's how this?
I'm standing.
All right, any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, uh, we don't need a little call vote on that, I believe, we just need a, all those in favor for adopting the five-year reappraisal cycle, please signify the same.
Aye.
All opposed?
And, uh, everybody should have one of these little pamphlets. Um, this is something that we're going to try to be getting the word out about the reappraisal, so people don't just end up with an assessment change notice in their mailbox and wonder what's going on. I called the state and asked them if we could put this pamphlet inside those assessment change notices, and they no longer do that. They send everything out for Nashville, and they don't do inserts. Uh, talked to Mayor McPhizic. Uh, he said he would check to see if we might could send these out in the bodily utility bills. Uh, talked with Mr. Tony Kirk, BEA, he's checking to see if we can send them out in the BBA statements. Uh, if you have town hall meetings, I know, uh, Commissioner Buffer and Commissioner Lake, we're going to have one this Saturday in Whiteville. Uh, we'll be handing those out there, so I want to do whatever we can to try to get the word out, and like Miss Amber said, the postage to mail these things, it's, it's a lot. We've got over twenty-one thousand parcels, so, um, multiply whatever the postage is, and it's twenty-one thousand. So, um, if you have town hall meetings, what you know, it's just activities at churches, wherever we can help educate the public about.
I encourage that, to each commissioner to have that in their district. I think it's important, town hall meetings, to do those. Very important. Thank you, Josh. Any other elected officials that we have, we're just trying to stand and see if we have any. If not, I'll move into this, um, Mr. Graves, Pat Garrett, Stephen Graves? Okay. Would I land a field?
Get in there, more. Um, just a quick update, uh, we did meet with T.V.A., uh, Mr. Robach, first of last week. The mayor was in the business, but we sent, uh, Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore, sit there with us. Um, our engineer also was present. And, uh, they laid out, uh, basically, an expedited process, so we can get back over, so it was very positive. Uh, we are currently, uh, with the graciousness of, uh, Casey Swift and the Highland Department completing our road around the state, we talked about before. Uh, they've been working on that since the bill last week, and the weather's mostly cooperating, uh, it's been a little rainy some days. Uh, but Casey's got a roll, and, uh, it's looking really good. Uh, we were actually getting the final layer of the gravel on top, and actually, uh, we'll finish up shortly, uh, with the path where trucks will actually be back, and, and Dr. Barbers on themselves. So that's, you know, that's good, that's a good thing. Um, we haven't targeted, uh, given a hard date, uh, I've, uh, talked briefly with the mayor about that, of course, yesterday, we, that's it, but we want to get it done as soon as we can, uh, we want you to be able to put out the word to your constituents, hey, it's open that up. But, uh, that's coming soon, and, and, ladies and gentlemen, know, uh, once we get that date, uh, lined out. Uh, I'm trying to think of anything else. We, uh, we did meet, uh, shortly after the first of the year, on November fifth, uh, the Solid Waste Committee met. Had a good meeting on the Commission, and I'm sure more about that. But I'm really excited about our committee, that's a good committee, uh, on Solid Waste Board, I appreciate all of it. Any questions anybody has about, anything I may have answered back in Trump test?
Anybody have any questions?
Who's going to pass out my money and say, hey, it's open? Yeah, okay.
It's been, it's, it's, uh, things are progressing, and thank you, Mr. Graves, for all the work you did. It's important for you.
Yes, sir. Of your convenience centers in the county, do they, have any of our ramps?
Uh, you've got, uh, two is the one that's got the ramp.
Oh, and one has ramp?
Yes, sir, and that's, uh, we're able to do that there strictly because of the size of area we have. Though we have a few other ones that probably would be could do a ramp system, some of them are spaced a bit loose to do it.
Ours may be too small, but anyway, the questions come up, you know, comments been made about some of the elderly people, the disabled people that have trouble. Uh, would it be possible to disrupt the attendant there when he actually sees that situation, make it an assistant?
Sure, I think absolutely, well, absolutely, absolutely. That's, that's not, that's the, uh, mostly done, just to protocol anyway, uh, not necessarily your teenager that's bringing up the garbage out, but, uh, maybe a little lady, you know, that especially not that tall, because those red boxes are pretty tall, uh, getting the garbage up, or, or anybody that suggests to you, you know?
I'll pass it on.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Graves, appreciate you.
Thank you all very much.
First name, you there, Graham, let's start it.
All right, if you don't need to speak, you can, that, somebody, y'all here.
I'm not a very loud person, I'll... Uh, I guess I can start with our, uh, project monitors, we have ordered, we need those in, so, uh, we got, uh, the three licenses for the CBR, uh, of the law bag, we can find, get, uh, three project monitors there. Uh, we are still waiting over the hangman. We are still waiting on the hangings. The company department says they're still waiting on the chill. I wouldn't think that was still an issue, that's what they're telling us. Other than that, call volume for December was around one eighty. So we're still in that two hundred a month range. The, of course, the contract we have received around ninety-five thousand because of the contract so far. Expecting another forty because of that, so that'll help our revenue. That's about all I have for the answer, any questions?
Any questions?
Is that like for the year, or is that
It's basically back pay, what they owe us, that they wouldn't pay it to a contract in place.
Okay, and there's an additional fifty or so?
Forty.
Sir, unfortunately here, we would address this commission. Overtime was an issue with your department, how's overtime looking now?
Not great, it's much better, just because we don't pay enough people to work overtime now. We're down to eleven full-time employees with a note that we're expected to be out for a year for military. And no way to catch it.
So when you say not great, you have a number?
We just, our for the year budget was a hundred and thou- hundred and fifty thousand, we just had a budget amendment. I think we were at one seventy-three for the year.
Okay, you said eleven full-time employees, what are your full staff coming?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Would you move that number one more time, you said? We're at one seventy-three for the year, and the budget was one fifty?
Right.
So we're half, we're only halfway through the year, and we already exceeded our budget?
Right.
Which is significant, man.
Last year was well over three hundred thousand for the year, so I don't know how we ended up at one fifty for this year anyway.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, Derek.
And we have, I'm not sure who's back there, actually. And just for your show, you'll come in and do business, I believe. For your, for your, for your Okay, now, if we could, we're going to our committees, we have them first, we have Commissioner Coy Ruffer, who is our law enforcement chairperson.
Thank you, Mayor, and Commissioners. The law enforcement committee made on bids for the new patrol vehicles that we purchased. And we're waiting on one more bid to come in to equip the equipment that's purchased. And we also made to talk about the possibility of hiring three more deputies to eliminate the strain on the personnel. And I think it better serve our career with the chair of the board, and that's what we meant on this evening.
No action tonight?
No action tonight, I'm sorry.
Okay. And then we have Commissioner Vale, do you have a report on our buildings that you need to discuss with the commission?
Yeah, it's not really an official report, I guess, but we have the facility that Josh's office is in, that we've got some significant maintenance that needs to be done on it. They've got roof leaks at both HVAC units on top of the building. One of the HVAC units is not working, and the other one is the same age as the one that's not working, and you can't buy parts for them. So the units, the one must be replaced, the other probably should be replaced. We're gonna have to get a crane to do it at the same, it would make sense to do both of them at the same time. Both of them are leaking, so it doesn't make, when they, we take, those units are old, so when they take the units off, they're gonna have to change out the curbs that they're sitting on. So there's no point in trying to water a curb that's twenty-five years old and want to rip back out as soon as it breaks. So we really need to get a price on both units and to basically do a repair procedure on the roof. I had gotten budgets for both of those things. The budget number on the units and roof repair is gonna be about thirty thousand dollars. What I would like, I guess, to propose is, if that's acceptable to the commission, to put together a scope of work and put out the bid, the numbers should come in at that, or hopefully maybe even below.
Thank you, you, you were to get together the scope
Yeah, we put together the scope of work, but we didn't do it until, until we know that we can spend the money, there's no point in asking guys to give prices on, 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 on the job, so.
We're gonna have to, have to address that. With the units and with the roof, it's gonna have to be addressed, and it's a small building as well.
Yeah, we, yeah, that's, that's, that's first issue. The second issue, we've, we have met and discussed the annex, or not the annexed building, the archives building. And there's still, we haven't come to any kind of firm conclusions. However, that building is in dire need of repair. There is a, a, a safety issue with the porch on the thing. And people are still using the building, so that's something that probably needs to be done sooner rather than later. I was told that they, that the previous mayor is, I don't know, it wasn't a contract, but they told somebody to do it, that they never got to it, and it never got done. I, I don't know, I mean, that's, that's, neither here nor there. It's still needs, needs repair.
That's right.
The roof needs replacing on that, and then all of the windows need to be replaced as well.
On the archives?
On the archives.
But again, that, that, the, that's not out of the commit, out of the commission.
That's just something that we are talking about, so that's. And then lastly, just, just to keep you up at night, you know, the county, we've got about forty million dollars worth of real estate that in various forms and fashions. And it appears that a lot of it needs repair. If you look at, basically, any type of facilities, maintenance, people, they typically recommend that you spend about two to four percent maintaining your buildings per year of their value. That would be a lot more than we've spent for a lot, a lot of years. So we have no recommendations. I just need that everybody needs to know that we've got a lot of buildings that are old. This is one of them, we've got a lot of serious issues. We had flooding, Todd, over, when, when, we had that hard freeze, pipes busted, flooded the basement here in this building. So we, there's a lot of issues with a lot of the buildings that we have. And if we're going to, to keep the buildings and maintain the buildings so that we can pass them down to the next generation, we're gonna wind up having to spend some money at some point down home, so. Good for thought. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, these chairs are built for me.
So, so, do, I don't know if you see me, but do you, now, should I proceed on giving prices for the repair work on, on this building across the street?
Once the will of the commission, I, I believe that's acceptable to go ahead and start the process anyway. We're gonna, we're gonna have to address it. And whether you've got to get a scope of work, and then moves in to bring out the bids to the sound like, there's gonna have to be two bid process on that with the roof as a separate. But there's gonna have to be coordinated at the same time. When that lift comes in to take those off, then that has to be to start with.
I don't think it's gonna be, I mean, it's, it's not gonna be hard. Roofers and HVAC, you know, you get contracts working in it all the time. It will need to be coordinated, and Chase can be the key man to, you know, the liaison between the two. But it, the only other way to do it would be to have a general contractor involved, and then we want to spend even more money. And it really, I don't think there's a need to have a general to do, to do that. Since the roof is just actually over repaired, you know, it's not, it's not gonna be, we're not putting on all the roof.
Right. I would think that with the, go back with your committee, give a full recommendation on that, and what we've got to do, and then bring them forward. That's, that's what I would recommend. Any other recommendations on that? Thank you, Commissioner. Is, Commissioner Grandson, do you have anything?
The only thing I can have to do, I have to go, is actually the airport. We are in the process of receiving bids, going to start receiving bids in February on the new terminal building. Our last discussion in the committee was to have Mr. Swift help us with the road putting it in, and that should lead us forward on a lot of savings on money toward the terminal and getting that started. The next item would be a little more courthouse restoration on it, is that a standstill due to weather? We'd look to pick back up on that in the early spring when weather patterns and probably no later than March or April of this year. That's all I have.
I got a question. Yes, Senator.
I don't, so we, we're gonna build another terminal? Do we ever build one?
Well, we're, we're in the process of getting bids together, so if we presented the money, we presented it to the commission. We're interested in a, a two-story, another terminal.
All right, that's it. We need to, Commissioner Wayne, do you have anything for the library? Please be more
Nothing to you, I think they went down and looked at the Incap restaurant to see if they could get it where it's useful. No, no new bids.
Okay, no new bids, so that's okay. Commissioner Hannibal?
Solid Waste Committee has met twice since our last commissioners meeting. We met December seventh, and again, January fifth. We've been going through a lot of different stuff going over. I do have two, two items tonight. One is our tipping fee, right now, the landfill is twenty-two fifty per ton. If you're looking at demolition stuff that comes in, the committee is recommending that go from twenty-two fifty to twenty-eight dollars a ton. In comparison, Walton is at thirty-eight, so that's ten dollars ahead of us. Fayette County is fifty dollars per ton. So again, we're asking to raise it from twenty-two fifty up to twenty-eight dollars. Still being well below any of the landfills around us. The second item, this is really the thing that's taking probably, other than trying to get the landfill open, is our amendment to our 2014 contract with CMP. I think that was part of the packages that were sent out. Right now, the, the contract, again, is, is written in 2014, it's, we're paying ten thousand, three hundred ninety-five dollars a month for seventy loads. And that contract has not been amended or looked at since then. As you can imagine, we are under a different economic system since, since 2014, things have gone up. So the amendment is, and we looked at the number of loads that were over the last twelve months that were being picked up. The amendment is to change that to, and to take into consideration the added cost that CMP is incurring. But to amend the contract, bring it up to date to eleven thousand, seven hundred for up to sixty loads. Then each additional load added would be two hundred and ten dollars. Part of what CMP has been providing out to Whiteville Lake is the dumpster out there. And picking that up, and that has not been part of the contract, it's just something the previous administration had agreed with and asked for them to do. But to, to bring in, bring the contract up to date to, is to amend that for two hundred and fifty dollars a month for CMP to maintain, pick up, and take care of that dumpster.
Now, we, Mr. Chair, could I ask you please for that? On, that is, that amendment will carry us through to the end of the fiscal year?
Right.
That's what the amendment is all about. Just to make sure everybody understands that that amendment is carried through the end of this fiscal year.
Are you asking for, you, you need to vote on these two, action tonight, please. Are you gonna take these separately, or you gonna start with the amendment to the contract? What do you like to start with, sir?
Just a minute. I got a question.
Yes, Senator.
We, our one limit is reopened, we're gonna only take trash from Harbin County residents for projects.
Is that correct? That was part of the discussion. I think that's something that we need to keep discussing. That's, that's, that's been the standard that they've gone by. If, if we decide to change that, then, I mean, again, we talked about it in this last committee meeting, we can bring it up at the next one.
So, so that, but, but as it stands now?
As it stands right now, I'm second Director Graves, we only take Harbin County.
That's what, okay, that's correct.
And, and part of that discussion has got to be, we've got, when we open up cell three, we're looking at, depending on who you talk to, six months to maybe a year and a half on cell three. And then when we, when we finally get approval for cell four to open up, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chairman, it's what? Seven, eight, nine years on the end? So part of that discussion has got to be with how much of the longevity we want that, that, our landfill to, to last.
Just, just to come in, the, the people of Harbin County spent a lot of money on this thing, and I would hate to see the surrounding counties wind up taking advantage of the situation. I mean, I want to keep our, our fees low, but it's because our people were paid in our pay to get it back online.
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, why would they, what's they been picking up from?
Well, they, CMP is providing a dumpster out there, and then they are taking care of emptying it and putting it back out there. And that's, like I said, that has not been part of, of the previous contract, we want to bring everything up to level.
It wasn't in, it wasn't in
It wasn't in the contract, it was, it was an agreement, and again, the committee is, is working hard to get everything in right.
Okay.
We want to get that covered.
Okay, I have another question. What'd you say about the fee?
Right, the tipping fee, if
No, not that fee, fee that
I'm talking about the tipping fee.
Okay, that's, that's including with fee that every citizen?
No, no amendments. The tipping fee has nothing to do with household trash pickup or anything like that that's going on. This is, this is, if someone was to tear down a house, or remodel a house, all the, everything that would be thrown into a bin would be brought out there. And then the tipping fee is what, what we would charge, we'll take that per ton. Again, twenty-two fifty to twenty-eight. And Walton, they would caution thirty-eight down there and fifty at Fayette County.
Amendment fiscal year, just making our bill, I want to amend
Well, no, the, the amendment is to get us through the fiscal year for budget purposes, and
June thirtieth.
Right, to June thirtieth, and then there's, there's things that we'll look at to renew the contract for three years if, if it's some
Fires and all that.
Well, no, this is, I mean, all this is gonna do is change where, where it's done. Right now, we're, he's having to tote all of that out to Walton and dump it. And so once we, once we open it up, it'll be dumped in the park.
All right, we're asking for, and Chairman, are you asking for a motion? Do you want, you want to take those separately? Ask for your motion. You want to address the tipping fees? Yeah.
I suppose that way you accept the, to the fees.
Commissioner Wright, we have a...
Second.
Motion to accept the new tipping fee rate and we have second, Commissioner Amir. Any discussion there?
Uh, let's say, call us to gain.
The, um, it's, it's twenty-eight, that we moved from twenty-two, is that correct?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two fifty to twenty-eight?
Okay, I get you.
Per ton.
Per ton.
Seeing no discussion, I believe we need a roll call vote on that, and Clerk, because I just saw anyone I see. If we could have a roll call vote on that.
Bell?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
De便儿?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantum?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Same?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. You, Mr. Dean, you need to, uh, address the amendments here.
Amendment, okay.
Yes.
So the, again, the commission makes a recommendation that the amended contract, the two thousand fourteen contract with CMP, uh, to include eleven thousand seven hundred as the cost for up to sixty loads. Uh, two hundred and ten dollars for each additional load. Uh, and again, as we've looked at it for the past twelve months, sixty has been, has been the average. And to include the two hundred and fifty dollar cost of maintaining and supplying, um, the, uh, trash, trash bin at White Lake.
Alright, is there a motion?
I'm literally accept this amendment.
I say.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Gillum, second by Commissioner. I mean, approach.
Second.
Any discussion there, please?
Yeah, we also, we also, if I'm wrong, tell me, we also agree with it. And Stephen Gray said if we needed help for having something picked up, save us that extra two hundred and ten dollars. If his man was available, he would help us out also.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for clarity, with this contract, uh, be republished every three years?
Yeah, there's, uh, part of the amendment is, uh, coming up, we're, we're, once we give it up to three months prior to the, this expiring in June, uh, you know, we can cancel it or he can cancel. If not, it'll be renewed, uh, for three years. Again, that, that's something that wasn't truly addressed in the original contract. It's been going on since two thousand fourteen. Uh, yeah, there, there's a automatic renewal in there if both parties will agree with what's going on and, um, and one of the issues that, that, uh, again, as I mentioned earlier, things have gone up since two thousand fourteen, cost of fuel and, uh, just, uh, the consumer price index has gone up. Uh, that's gonna be part of it too is, uh, it'll allow, uh, CMP to, uh, and have the commission look at the price based off of the consumer price index. If it, if it goes up, then that amount will, will go up and if consumer price index goes down, then that amount goes down.
So if everything is going well, satisfied with it as far as the mission was concerned?
Yes, sir.
If everything is going well, it will automatically be renewed in three years?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? We have the first, second on the floor saying if there's no more discussion, we need to move to the... And, and Clerk, I believe we need a roll call, she said yes with, uh, they have their phones on. Yes, ma'am.
Bell?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
De便儿?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantum?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Same?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Our motion passes. Commissioner Hannibal, you have anything for, for amendments? Uh, we need to, uh, we also, um, Commissioner Wright?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. American Rescue Plan, we met back January fifteenth. You know, we've been going through a process with all the entities here in the county of the, uh, freshwater act and, and the sewer problem. And, and TDA's sitting down money for the committee to distribute to each of the entities. So we did that. And also, the state's sitting down money on top of that before that. We, the, uh, American Rescue Plan Committee has a positive recommendation that we would like to see us help, uh, with this project. Uh, the mayor stuck the necks out, stood out on land by themselves to help the county, to make the county stronger by fixing their lagoons, fixing their water meters, just doing the things that needed to be done twenty years ago. We, the committee felt like, we don't wanna be able to use like Jackson, Miss City or Baltimore about the water that hasn't boiled the water. No clean water. We got blue oval coming in and we wanted to be ahead of the curve, not waiting on something to happen. So I applaud the mayor. So what we come up with the other night, everybody has the proposal here in front of us. There's a mistake on the two bottoms. It was not seventy-five thousand, it was eighty thousand. Uh, we would like to see us give these entities and private communities this amount to help with their project. No, it's not their temperature change, it's probably not even box change, but it's a little bit helps. I think most of the mayors are here, presidents are here tonight and, uh, I just, uh, we just felt like this was a, uh, good effort on the county as the big brothers of the county. I think that, uh, I hope you find it, uh, with your votes and support this and, uh, is there any questions?
I got a, I got a question.
Yes.
Uh, uh, these, I don't know that much about this, these funds and how they're restricted, but what, what are the restrictions on these funds? That y'all are proposing to use?
There's, the, restrictions on these American Rescue Plan, most of them have been waived. There are very few restrictions that will come back out of this. This is not one of them. This has been approved and blessed by the state, a C, C pass and everything. Uh, stuff you can't pay for, uh, pay raises, lawsuits, um, and I can't think of something else on that. That's four things they do not recommend you get caught up in.
So you can use it for operating funds if you had to or need to?
Yes. Kinda like, uh, your building, if worse comes worse and money.
The, uh, when, when are y'all, are you proposing to, to do this?
Okay, I put out here, I told all the mayors and the presidents that this is not just a, this is a one-time check. That means you will not receive this money until you spend your money. For example, Baltimore, seventy-five thousand, when they spend their seventy-five thousand, it might be next month, it might be six months from now, it might be a year from now. But when they spend that money, Southwest will let us know they have spent that money and we will reimburse them that seventy-five thousand dollars.
Well, I, I, I mean, I personally think it's a, it's a, it's a great idea. Uh, I, I have a concern because of, we've got, initially, I, I have no idea when these suits are gonna be settled and how they're gonna be settled. Maybe our, our lawyer friend can...
And we cannot use this money for that.
No, but you can use it for operating capital and we have to use our operating capital to pay, pay a lawsuit and we could, we could, we could be able to turn...
We need to turn this into general funds and not have it trail because they will come back and say, that's what I was...
Yeah, that, and that is a good point. I energize, please. If you take those funds, uh, and put them into the general fund, uh, it is a term called co-mingling and you can do that because those restrictions, uh, we have, we're under the limit of ten million. Now, co-mingling is a term that you usually don't hear that it's okay to do. In private enterprises, you can't co-mingle the funds with certain, certain things. But on this, you can. If you put it into the general fund, then you can use it for general government purposes. And that's what that means on that. But, but to, to Commissioner Wright's point, yeah, as it stands now, you can't use those particular ones for that.
So the money that we received strictly for water and wastewater, we've distributed that to the cities, correct?
They have not all received that yet.
Okay, but it has been allocated to them. This money can be used for anything?
No.
Operating expenses?
For those projects. It all goes through Southwest. With Southwest?
No, 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 this, this money is not restricted by...
No.
For other... So I'm, I'm with Commissioner Bell. I mean, we, we're facing a lot of things. I mean, it looks like we, to me, we wanna hold this top of the county. I was told that we may notice something on the suit within the next month or two, is that it?
The, uh, FLSA suit goes mediation, uh, February sixth.
So, you have any idea how long the process that's gonna be?
Well, mediation's scheduled for three days and six thousand and eighth here in Baltimore. And, uh, and so we'll know something, you know, later than the eighth when the guy's settling this over how much. And that'll have to come before this body for approval.
So, so we'll have, we'll know, we'll know that before the next commission meeting? Sound familiar?
Commissioner Wright, wh- what's the running balance on the ARD, but you know?
Well, we have not spent a dime of the two point four, um, that we just were saying, two point four eight three, I believe what it is, uh, we have not spread it down with it. There's controversy of some things and we still haven't spent all the money of the last ARD money. So we're thinking the day that we're somewhere around two point five million dollars.
But twenty to two?
Yeah. Everybody's been appropriated and promised, but that's, was shifted to general fund because it was not used last year, so it automatically goes to general fund.
That's correct.
So that's what's got things kinda mixed up. But this two point four, we have not tested, but we have not approved any actions toward that money.
That's correct. Commissioner, last year for that fiscal, um, budget, I believe there was some appropriated and, um, and it, and it was not used, so they put it back into the general fund. But, um, it would be, it was proved to be used a certain amount, is that?
That's correct.
Four hundred, ten?
Yes, four hundred and eighty, yes, completed, uh, minimum four, for that.
Yes, four hundred and eighty, ten, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, well, this is what, uh, Commissioner Wright has said, and I understand about the distribution and going back to general fund, but before we choose either, can we, um, choose to table this or further discussion? Since we're just been abused this tonight, it's a big decision and I think, uh, I think let the commission absorb this, think about it and make a table this for further discussion.
Second.
Alright, we'll move to table this for further discussion.
We have a motion to table and we have a second on the floor. We need to move into a vote because the motion to table is not a benefit or a benefit. So we need to move into immediate vote for a table. Ma'am Clerk, do we need a roll call vote on the table? I believe we did. Yes, ma'am. Roll call vote, please.
Bell?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
De便儿?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantum?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Same? Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, and, uh, thank you, all right, Commissioner, and we have some more, Commissioner Amir. Commissioner Wright, thank you for the work that you did on that. Did, folks, this is a hard decision. Uh, and, and we've said, these commissioners go through a lot of hard decisions and they're tough decisions, gonna have to admit it because we're responsible for not just our money, it's all around us. So we're trying to be good stewards of the money and, uh, thank you for your hard work. I know that's kinda easy, Commissioner Wright, but thank you for, for every, every input and for what each commissioner does. Uh, and, uh, Commissioner Amir, we need to move to you for our budget. Ma'am Clerk, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioner. Uh, several budget amendments tonight. I think it's roughly eleven, uh, in your five packet. We've got a number so they're easier to, uh, keep up with. If, if you'll pull out, uh, number eight first. Just to explain, this was approved by the, uh, budget committee that met, uh, tonight prior to the commission meeting. And this is just a line of transfer, uh, the mayor's office. Dividing fifty-four, one-ten, one-ninety-six, training nineteen hundred dollars and crediting, uh, fifty-four, one-ten, three-fifty-five. We just traveled and that requires no access for the full commission. Uh, it was approved by the budget committee. Uh, we'll go through these slowly, take questions, uh, for those, if we have any members, if we have them and it goes smoothly, we can, we can take them all together. Uh, I'll explain it as best I can in each one. Uh, we're just starting with number one. Uh, this is county mayor's office. Uh, we're dividing, uh, secretary's line item, twenty thousand, state retirement, thirty-six hundred, employee health, ten thousand for a total dividend of thirty-three thousand six hundred. Crediting, uh, repair and maintenance, one thousand, part time, eight thousand eight hundred, uh, office equipment, ten thousand and the fund balance, thirteen thousand eight hundred. Are there any questions at all on that one?
Yes, Commissioner, uh, Ryan, one more. You're saying, uh, employee health, you dividend for ten thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so...
Uh, the mayor, he has a room in the secretary line item and also the health insurance and he's got a, uh, part time employee, that's why it's being credited. But there was, there was room in the budget in those line items versus going to the fund balance. And that's why you have the credit of the thirteen K to the fund balance that was, uh, uh, just money in his budget, he did not need at this time. And of course, all, all of this will be revised for next fiscal year. Uh, and also, if you were to see it, but several of our, uh, offices are getting this next-gen server upgrade. We discussed that in the meeting, uh, to some degree. That seven-one-nine line item is restricted fund. The mayor has got the pricing on, on the upgrade of this. Uh, we noticed that in, in Mr. Toad's budget as well. He's trying to get all that updated, it's just, it's just outdated. Any other questions on that area? Okay, moving to number two. Uh, the ambulance department, and again, not going to, uh, the fund balance, but as Jamie stated in his briefing, uh, behind on overtime. So dividend, uh, assistance, twenty-five thousand and attendance, seventy-eight thousand and employee insurance, forty thousand, crediting overtime, one forty-two, six hundred and refunds, four hundred for a total dividend credit of a hundred and forty-three thousand. And, uh, we looked in the budget committee, since he is shorthanded without going to fund balance, there's room in those line items to move to overtime. There's room in those line items to move to overtime, uh, to cover that, that pay. And that's, we normally try to use that practice before going to the fund balance. Well, that's really so shorthanded. There is room there. Go ahead.
The hundred million dollar question is, they don't have enough line items in the future to pay for this extraordinary overtime. That was, nobody knows it, but I've seen that's going.
One, one question that didn't get asked is Jamie was going to look at a new schedule that we talked about in the ambulance committee, meeting with, um, Chairperson Miller and I should, I meant to ask him had he implemented that chip, but, um, that's something we were looking at. That would help. And I believe that was going to three buses during the day and two at night. That will take a significant load of, of overtime line item.
And employee insurance still be paid at some point?
Well, it's just that there was more room in that line item under all employees. That was based on a certain number of employees and he does not, has not been staffed to that level.
Oh, good action.
That, that correct. Yes, sir. Any other questions on number two? Okay, moving to number three. I will explain. This is a big one. Uh, your, your debits are on page three. Your credits are on page four for this landfill. Showing your total dividends and credits of eight hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. Uh, I'll start with the debits and, and kind of explain those. Uh, laborers debiting seventy-six thousand, three-fifty. Clerical forty-nine thousand, eight hundred. Social Security thirty-three hundred, state retirement eighty-eight hundred, employee insurance five thousand. Employee Medicare one thousand, vehicle's fifteen thousand, other capital outlay two hundred thousand. And the fund balance, which that is the two oh seven fund balance or the landfill fund balance, four hundred ninety-nine thousand, four fifty. Now, just kind of explain those debits before we get to the credits. Uh, the laborers, they're down on one person. And I'm not sure if they're going to replace him at that time. He, he had to retire. Uh, I believe some of Stephen's salary was coming out of that line as well. Um, on the clerical, uh, previously, some, some employees in the mayor's office were getting paid out of this line item. That's been corrected. So, there was room in that line item. Uh, your social security, retirement, insurance, Medicare is all because of that or lack of an employee. Um, the other capital outlay, that was for potentially a new kamatsu loader. And, and that's kind of been taken off the table. They're making do with the loader they have after we had purchased the, uh, new compactor. And then the big, um, debit is from the fund balance. And now we'll go to the credits. Crediting administrative three thousand. Private, uh, contract private agencies, five hundred seventy thousand. Maintenance bill is two thousand, maintenance equipment seventy-five thousand, maintenance vehicle one thousand. Uh, other contracted services seventeen thousand, five hundred. Fuel fifteen thousand, utilities fifteen thousand, gravel, church, uh, ten thousand, two hundred. And depreciation a hundred and fifty thousand. And to explain maybe why those line items were, were shortfall. Uh, the administrative, that, that guy Stephen Graves, that three thousand got him up to the salary he was supposed to be, be drawing. Uh, the contract private agencies, that is Mr. Grantham. And, and a bill that he had or, or ongoing bill, uh, as he does the work out there trying to get us back open. That's also C and P contract. That's also A two H engineering. And, uh, also what we've been having to pay North Mississippi landfill while we're closing. So, that's, that's what the big one is. Uh, there, uh, on the maintenance, some of those line items were just not enough money in the budget or things they ran into, uh, on the equipment. There is one door that's a safety issue. I think that's why that's in there. It was around twenty-five thousand. Uh, the other contracted services, I believe that's just the waypoint analytical. They do the soil samples and, and that type thing at the landfill on a yearly basis. Uh, every time they visit. And then the depreciation of that line item had fifty thousand in it. We were way over, uh, on that. Which that would come like with this, uh, the compactor, even though it's financed to ten years, it's probably a thirty year depreciation uh, on that. But that line item was, was way under budget. On that. So, that's the debits and credits. Like I said, totally eight fifty-eight, seven hundred. And, and the explanation behind that. Are there any further questions on that?
I've got a question, but it's not really this. I don't have an answer to this. You mentioned that compactor, but that was like a six hundred thousand dollar deal, right?
Yes, sir.
And I guess we're just making monthly notes? Is that what we're doing on that?
Yearly, is that right, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Uh, we have a payment coming up on, I believe it's first of June. Uh, from what I understand, it's a hundred thousand.
So, again, Bobby, is, 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 would that be something that those A R P funds would, could, could cover? Pay that out of that?
Yes.
Maybe a six hundred thousand dollar deal on our plate.
Of course, keep in mind, please, Commissioner, that is an enterprise fund. And we need to work those figures out within this and, and with the extra tipping fees. And then with the, um, calculations that we're doing with opening in certain date. We will handle those funds, but we're working on that even now, uh, in my office.
Yeah, that's one thing. You've got to be careful when you mess with solid waste or, or highway departments. You want to kind of just let them stay on their own unless they're satisfied beneath the hell. Not to say A R P. Yes. And, and moving forward, Commissioner Vale, uh, things we will be looking at, uh, we've actually been had, we've been closed. We've had two expenses and also loss of income. Uh, if we can get open hopefully prior to this next fiscal year, that's three things we've got to capture to, you know, see what we need to do with that project. We've had an extreme deal to North Mississippi landfill. Uh, Mr. Grantham's done a great deal over the last two to three years out there. Hopefully goes away once we're back open and, and completed. And then also, uh, we've been losing the income from the tipping fees. Uh, to give an example, even my business, my guard was just going to Wal-Mart store. Where, where we asked the C and B, you got the business of him too, and he passes through the tipping fee to line home. Any more questions on the landfill budget, ma'am? Okay, moving to number five. This is animal control prepared by Andrew Gunn and Jim Pierce. Uh, total debit's fifteen, one eighteen, twenty-five. Uh, that is debit in fund balance, two thousand, eight eighteen, twenty-five. Communication eighteen hundred, drug and medical supplies five hundred and utilities two thousand. Uh, crediting employee dependent insurance, three thousand nine forty-five, ninety-two. Animal food supplies, five hundred forty-six, ninety-seven. Food supplies, uh, one fifteen, ninety-three. Gas, six thousand, five ninety-one, seventy-one. Uh, other supplies and materials, three thousand, eight fifty-four, fifty-six. And other charges, fifty-three, sixteen for your credit total of fifteen thousand, one eighteen, twenty-five. Uh, we've got the reasons over there on the right. And we do know one thing that definitely affected them was the bad, uh, cold weather that we did have. And they worked extra hard, uh, trying to keep animals warm, keep them from dying, give it the calls and, and all of that. And if there are any more questions on that, Commissioner Pierce is here, well, if you, if you have any questions on that. Okay, number six, uh, the budget committee has some, uh, some changes on this one. And, and also some, some clarity. Um, this budget amendment is, uh, for county clerk's office. And it was debiting fund balance, twelve thousand, two oh seven. And, and one of our questions was, it didn't have the social security and Medicare coming out of it. But that's for, uh, Jerry Armstrong, working part-time. Uh, some of you in a, in a previous, uh, amendment had, had asked about the money the state allows. A retired link official to work up to a hundred and twenty days, is that right, Mr. Pierce? Uh, part-time at their former salary they were making. So, if, if you've done any math there, that, that will tell you why it's, it's so much. But with that being said, that they, he's drawing Medicare and social security. There's no need to deduct that from that amount. But we looked at, um, the clerk's budget. And if you, if you want to write this amendment down, instead of doing fund balance, we're debiting account fifty-two, five hundred dash one oh six, and that's the deputies line item. We're debiting it eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And then we're debiting account fifty-two, five hundred, dash three oh seven, which is communications. Thirty-nine, fifty-seven for a total of twelve, two oh seven and credited part-time personnel, twelve, two oh seven. Uh, there was room within that budget to do so without going to the fund balance. So, that's what we chose to do at this time. Any other questions on that? Okay. Number seven, uh, Harbor County Sheriff's Office. Uh, similar to the same thing with debiting, uh, deputy pay line seventy-five hundred, investigator pay line eleven thousand for a total of eighteen thousand, five hundred and credited overtime eighteen thousand, five hundred. And that's the overtime that's been incurred because of, uh, lack of deputies or manhunt they went on or the other overtime that was, that was necessary. But, um, sheriff achieved more at room in, in the deputies and investigator line. We're making line transfers. Any more question on that? Number nine is the, uh, Workout Sheriff's Office. Debiting, uh, the guard pay line twenty thousand and crediting guard overtime twenty thousand. Same scenario, shorthanded on guards and, uh, had room in the guard pay line to work overtime, cover the shifts. Okay, number ten, this is a little more complicated. Uh, and Tony Evans makes sure we should tease, tease right a few minutes. There was a previous budget amendment in no, in, uh, November for the same amount as number ten, the four hundred eighty-two thousand, eight sixty-four, eighty-six. Uh, that amendment was created on, uh, eleven fifteen, twenty-two. And then Ashley had prepared one, well, that was eleven eight twenty-two. And then Miss Linda prepared one, uh, Friday, one thirteen, twenty-three. And the amount is still the same. The debit is, is for four hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred sixty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. And the credits are what have changed. Um, to make the social security, unemployment, Medicare and everything work out. Uh, those, those figures, uh, were wrong to some degree. To give you an example, the bonus payment on the, on your revenue package is eighty-three, seventy-five. That's changed from eighty-five to eighty-five previously. The, uh, social security changed. Uh, old amount was five thousand, two eighty-seven, sixty-seven. New amount is five thousand, one ninety-two, eighty-one. Uh, unemployment compensation went from, uh, fifty dollars on the new one. It's thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Medicare went from twelve, thirty-six, sixty-three to twelve, twenty-one, forty-four. And the other charges credited went from three sixty-four, three forty-eight, sixty-three up to three ninety-two, six sixty-three, forty. And the, the reason for that big one, of course, you don't have the old one in front of you. Uh, it had the highway parking bonuses on there. We don't do their payroll, so that check has to be cut straight to them to take care of that. And, and that's why that is off the amendment. And, and speaking of that, like Commissioner Ryan said, that is, uh, the old A R P money that's been moved uh, to the fund balance. I'm not totally clear on this other one, but Miss Linda did say we had about three hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars worth of P O's, um, coming up that were already approved. That may be taken out of, uh, the new A R P funds is what she told me to do. And that was a, a tie over the sheriff's department and the ambulance and all that ambulance equipment, if that stands right. But those, those are, uh, the budget amendments. They come with positive reputation for our budget committee. Uh, any more questions on, on any of those?
All right, is there a motion to approve all our budget amendments, please?
I'll make a motion, sir.
Motion's been properly made and set. Any discussions? Same, uh, moving to a roll call vote, please, Madam Clark.
Vale?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantham?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Catamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Linder?
Yes.
Miller? Pope?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Weems?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Motion passed. Um, we need to move into that. And folks, I know this is a long meeting and we haven't had one. We had, uh, no, remember, we didn't have one, of course, December. So, we have a lot of business, but that's what we're here to do, people's business. So, please forgive us if this one was long. I won't talk much. Good to see you real quick. Good to see our former mayor that day. Um, let's move into new business, please. The benefit of time, I believe. Commissioner Bumper, is that what you were referring to? Okay, we're, we're going to be action on that tonight. Okay. We'll move into, there's only Mr. Pierce? You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Christmas, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. Get started, this is, this stuff. Building permits for the month of December was four. Barren says four board for appeal zero. Animal control, ninety-one calls. Dispatches, ninety-one. Dogs picked up eighteen. Two transports in the month of, uh, uh, that helped alleviate some of the road state issues. Get a chance to actually make a better decision. Uh, comedic centers, uh, they are administered through my office, uh, just to make note each commissioner. Uh, we know the gravel is, uh, not good at the sites and it has been quoted and in the process of being purchased and uh, myself and speaker, we're going to ensure it gets there in time and manner across the next month, whether it's for many. And, uh, Commissioner Dever, uh, individual enhancement committee center has abandoned stroke into helping, uh, everyone with their garbage.
Thanks.
That doesn't improve. If you contact my ladies in the office, we will definitely address it. Uh, fire extinguishers, fire extinguisher and, uh, other common signs, which is one thing, trying to get out yourself and make them compliant. And, uh, anywhere else that you guys hear, we have a ramp. Uh, ramps are adjusted. If we find that will be a benefit, let's just figure out how we're going to pay for it and get it there. And here's some values, both, uh, some of the, uh, county building issues. Uh, as you know, we've had, you're going for flooding, the phone systems are down and all. And, uh, there was a recent OSHA, uh, inspection and we're asking expenses out of that. Come by and see me. I'll explain those to you. And.
Was that today, sir? That was today?
That was today.
Motion.
And, uh, what, what, on what side? Uh, what side? And because you already have an issue sweeping, uh, your current account fifty-one, eight hundred, dash two-three-five, uh, has eighty-two hundred dollars. So, as you get all these buildings fixed, you might as well get your budget number ready. So as you get all these buildings fixed, you might as well get your budget number ready. Is that what's going to happen? All right, uh, I owe this commission, uh, committee a apology. I was asked last May in November if we had had a public committee on slaughterhouses. We had, and we did have one at the planning commission. Uh, you read regulations, though, that does not suffice for the public meeting that you ladies and gentlemen should have. So my apologies to this authority on that. And, uh, we'll look into that very quickly. Uh, the other administrative, uh, aspect I have on the table tonight, before you have the resolution to adopt the government review fees, for Harbin County, uh, is the office. Tell you a little bit about that. What I did, uh, when Harbin County adopted resolution requirements, you know, back in, uh, the early nineties, they set some fees, and basically, you knew an explanation, here's going to be a five-thousand-dollar carport. You pay fifty dollars for permanent. You're going to build a five-hundred-dollar facility, you pay fifty dollars for permanent. Uh, these fees, to my findings, and some did, but it hasn't shifted over the years of execution of the zoning office. So what we did, we reached out to the counties around us, Fayette, uh, Harden, McNairy, Madison, Shelby, and we looked at some of the other counties as far as population and demographics across Tennessee. Uh, knowing that McNairy and Harden doesn't have any, uh, zoning requirements, uh, we prepared, uh, through Southwest Tennessee Department, a schedule that best anyway, Fayette, our major. Anticipated growth of Harbin County was coming to a conclusion. We thought this was best to be an opportunity for revenue, and basically, just a little cover the costs of the execution of what permit comes in, anything else is the Board of Appeals, and the other review processes we go through, what happened for you, and I would for your questions.
So, so, do you have an idea about how much it's going up? Uh, we don't have any listed existing things compared to this.
Yeah, the, the old, the old zoning compliance permit was, uh, fifty dollars, it's now a hundred. That's still about three-hundred dollars cheaper than any county around us.
Well, my next question is, are... How is the department doing from a legislative standpoint? Are, are all the brands that we need to go up?
No, the zoning office, uh, budget is, uh, you ask a question, so I'm going to give you an honest answer. We're, we're too budgeted.
For what?
I said, we're too budgeted, we're tracking too budgeted. We are where we should be at the midpoint of the year. I think they're underpaid, I think everybody in this administration is underpaid. My two girls who work in my office can go to Lowe's and make more money than Chick-fil-A, something's wrong. But I'm not here with a budget amendment for that. I'm here talking about the fees and structure. Harbin County is just not charging what other counties are.
But if, if, if we don't need the money to, to, to fund the office, going up just because, I mean, we're not in this to make money. We're, we're in this to serve the public.
And then it covers your costs. When somebody comes in with a permit and has to go through the Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission, the hours that myself or someone touches that is more than fifty dollars.
So again, so that means we're in the red, or we're, but, I mean, if it's, if it's costing us all money, then, does that make sense? If we're, if we're tracking on budget?
That, that's a fair assessment of what the revenue, we don't track the revenue we generate, so it's not a fair statement to say you are, you aren't tracking. For how the office is staffed, as far as labor hours, we're tracking the man hours, that ain't a possibility.
Mr. Pierce, this, this money goes to the general fund, doesn't it?
It does not.
Yeah, it does not.
It does, sorry.
It does, yeah, Commissioner Bell, the funds generated goes to the general fund, regardless of this on the office.
Well, I, I understand, I'm just trying to wrap my, it's basically a tax hike. And before I'm on board with going up on taxes, I just want to say we want to know why. And just because everybody else can get it, doesn't mean that we have to do it to the people of Harbin County.
We don't charge...
Again, we don't charge like every other county, and we're not aligned with what the other counties are doing on as far as permits for residents, mobile homes, trailer parks, and things of that nature. And this is a tent that instructs us for what...
So we're not currently charging any for those things?
Fifty dollars, no matter what.
First period, she says that it's nineteen ninety?
Ninety-two, I believe.
Ninety-two.
I believe that's on the...
We built, we built that since ninety-two on these figures that you have, of course.
So all the records that I can find, anybody know the difference on the property?
So we never went up to ninety-two?
Not yet. Nothing back in my pocket. Don't mind.
You probably want to make it.
Fifty dollars.
So it doesn't matter how big, how small?
If it's less than five thousand, we have it acquired.
I think you're basically building permits and dwelling suits.
Building permits, residents, uh, commercial projects, anything for a, uh, building permit, because we don't have a building inspector. Every other county has building inspectors, and they keep collecting tax, but as they get their different permits.
I know, that's a good thing about Harbin County.
That's great.
I mean, that's not negative, that's a positive.
Sorry. You heard McNairy, that'll join me down.
Does anyone have a copy of this fee schedule? You do have a copy of that resolution? Can you make sure?
Well, to me, these figures look very fair compared to other counties that I deal with outside of Harbin County. The increase looks very fair.
So I had the opportunity to, uh, spend a weekend with a gentleman that's a contractor in another county here in Tennessee. We was discussing fees and things of that nature, and I mentioned what we're hoping to accomplish. You build a house and makes your permit fee start five thousand dollars, and they charge you about a square foot of it. Recognize that statement, since we're already, these are very important. Again, someone touches a permit in my office, we just want to take the time to address it. If they ask to go before either one of the committees, the time they touch it, preparation, send that house to the members and all, is better minds than what we do.
How many permits did you issue this month, you said?
Uh, this past month, in December, we did four. Prior month, I think we did fifteen, we boarded on number six this month. December did appear to be slow due to holidays.
Mr. Pierce, you're asking for, uh, action on this resolution, Mr. Pierce?
I'm moving to accept the resolution for the important side.
Motion's been made and settled, any discussion, resolution. Saying none, we need to move in. Since this is affecting the, uh, the number D and E roll combo, Madam Clerk, please.
Bell?
No.
Bumper?
Yes.
Lee Barry?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Brackham?
Yes.
Hansley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Leder?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Thane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
No.
Wright?
Yes.
Next, uh, item of business, um, Mr. Connor's here, and he, uh, basically speaking on this, the, uh, what we want to have with it. Uh, two issues with previously how the commission voted to zone pieces of property. Uh, the two pieces of property were proposed for possible sites of development of rural hope. Uh, subsequently, since, uh, that, uh, those two parcels being voted for industrial, uh, the two individual parcels had been sold to other people that are primarily intentions of using as residential, thus reverting back to FAR, how the property were zoned and stocked with. I seek a motion, uh, among the, uh, commissions, might to, uh, rescind the previous vote, and allow these parcels to return back to their original designation of FAR. And I'm prepared to discuss either one parcel and the location if so required.
I'd like to make that motion, or motion to take it back to the FAR.
Second.
All right, we have a proper motion made, and we have a second to read and discuss.
I'd like to say disqualify those parcels for these...
All right, first one is, uh, was referred to, Commissioner, that presentation, that massive property, that was located on map twelve, parcel zero-zero-three, and it was approximately three-hundred-and-seventeen acres in northwest Harbin County. The second parcel was, uh, uh, in short, referred to as the Hoop Property, located on map nine, parcel zero-zero-eight, approximately a hundred-and-eighty-six, uh, acres out on Monday.
Mr. Pierce, second.
All right, any questions, any discussion?
Uh, Mr. Buckler?
I received an email on this, but, um, I, I have my information tonight, uh, Michael, where are you? I never replied back because I, I didn't have any information. I'm just, so tell him I'm sorry, I didn't reply. And that's when I haven't had the information.
I guess.
I got, I got, but is, is there any legal repercussions because of all the stuff that this field, like going back, which is, I mean, where this is?
Yes, because essentially what you're doing, uh, when you backed on the massive property in October of twenty-eighteen, and on the Hoop Property in April of twenty-twenty-one, you accepted the planning commission's recommendation, and by rescinding those votes, you're, uh, essentially rejecting the planning commission's recommendation and allowing these to stay as that they are.
But it's not going to, it's not going to open us up to legal liabilities or something?
No, no, it shouldn't. There's, I, I can't think of any reason why it would, and it's actually going to help settle, uh, that, uh, the Ross case that went to trial, was on appeal, and about got the settlement terms worked out on that, so it's actually going to help. Fair argument.
So it's two losses.
Yeah. I think that's...
If there's, uh, any more discussion on that, it is, we don't give everybody a chance. If there's not any, do we need, do we need a roll call on that? Do, our, our judge will show that he's able to do it. Do we need a roll call? I tell you, let's, let's do that, because this is a, it's an issue of rescinding. If we could, Madam Clerk, let's have it. His man, okay.
If it was in twenty-eighteen with rural hope?
Uh, yeah, so massive property was in two thousand eighteen. Uh, the number two property being the Hoop Property on one thirty-eight, was the second post, was actually the third post site, which was, uh, November of twenty-twenty.
All right, you just got the quote, that's a few. Second one on, bill over over one thirty-eight?
Then one was a bill over.
All right. Uh, I'll make, could we have a roll call, please? Is, I believe that would be proper.
Bell?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Lee Barry?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Brackham?
Yes.
Hansley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Leder?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Thane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Mr. Pierce? Usually we don't have this.
(inaudible).
I'll be here next month.
All right, Mr. Pierce, you have anybody want to contribute?
You just said, I didn't even mention, by the way, my, my past OSHA inspection.
There's only office pass to OSHA inspection today.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right. Well, the rest of this is a little complicated, so again, my apologies. Uh, tonight, we're going to, uh, take the coverage issues here that will, uh, allow us to, uh, stop the legislative process here going to, uh, public discussion. So the first item to the issue is to the, uh, the amendment to accept the, uh, slaughterhouses. What are we, about twenty dollars in defense?
That's a recommendation from the, from the planning commission. Now, before we move into, uh, because it does not have to have a second, I believe, we're moving to discussion. And then that, we can begin to vote in form.
Do we, do we have a copy of that in here somewhere?
Uh, we were going last month. It's the same, it's the same resolution. I told this commission that we already had our public meeting. It was the one that introduced the language to the current resolution that defined a custom slaughterhouse being of a smaller size, so it didn't bend in with the large scale, uh, like commercial. That defined the number of animals you could plus us during the day.
Already voted.
Already voted in agreement with the commission, but again, I deny this commission its public form that you hold public. And that's what I'm attempting to do now.
The move has been to meet and go in vote form.
Second. Motion's been made and settled. I think we have to have, uh, discussion on that to do, any discussion on that, go back to moving to public discussion on that for the slaughterhouse resolution, vote in form. All right, um, we need a roll call on that. Let's, let's have that, because we're moving out of record session into public forum. Let's have that, we need to, a good amount of time.
We're voting, move back to session, we're voting on our slaughterhouses.
We're, we're, we're holding, let's be very clear, we're holding to move out of session into public forum, so the public can, can talk, and we have two items, but that would be another, we have to do two public forums tonight.
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
Lee Barry?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Brackham?
Yes.
Hansley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Leder?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Thane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
All right, motion passed. We are now lead into the public comments in public forum. And I have here a slaughter, um, the public forum request, uh, for the slaughterhouses, it's, uh, Mr. Mitchell. My question, please, okay.
Thank you for the opportunity, uh, uh, I went here, uh, last, two months ago, so they know this has never come up, so not here to oppose this, uh, just, uh, letting you know that the planning commission, everybody knows, I've been hammering on your planning commission board here for the last year or two, they did outstanding, uh, coming up this resolution, they're doing, they're dropping their eyes across their teeth, they're on the right track, they're working hard for you as far as now, and, uh, that's really a comment, because I know everything's going to go on that, so it's just a small scale, uh, slaughterhouses, not murder stuff, so, uh, that's, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Buckler. If we want to open the floor, there was only one inside, and that was Mr. Mitchell. Is anybody else that would like to, uh, make a positive comment or to, to ask a question? We're in public forum, we don't want to deny to anybody, we want to give anybody a chance to, to have their say there. All right?
Motion's been reviewed, you've been begging.
Motion's been made to review and settle. Any discussion there? Saying none, and this will be another roll call vote. Madam Clerk, move back into record session, and the Harbin County Council.
Bell? Bumper?
Yes.
Lee Barry?
Yes.
Gillum? Brackham?
Yes.
Hansley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Leder?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Thane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
No.
This passes. How do you know we've got more? How do you know? And, and passes. Now that we convene into a record session.
And now that we're back in the record, record session, I would see a, uh, motion to add this only resolution for custom slaughterhouses as stated, ready to be presented to the legislature for the following specific.
That's a motion from the committee.
Look at the one, see.
Is that a hand play?
Uh, what we voted on last month, and now that we have the coverage here, I'm looking for a motion for you guys to accept. What we ordered on last month, now that we have the public here, I'm looking for a motion for you guys to accept the slaughterhouse changes into the resolution for Arden County.
Second.
Motion made by you in second. Any discussion on that motion?
There were some changes with it.
Absolutely not.
That's right, we had to have the public hearing for procedure.
I'm getting it.
That's right, that's right, I'm reading it. And, uh, do we need, uh, do we, do we need a little call vote on that? All right, all those in favor of the, of the, do we need a little call?
I should know, I'm sorry.
Okay. Oh, we shall. All right, those in favor, see if I'm the same. All the votes like that. Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Pierce, after the second.
All right, second item of discussion in my is the recommendation by the planning commission to send a moratorium for solar, uh, resolution acceptance for Arden County. A brief background, uh, of the continued solar, uh, discussions that everybody's not been part of, uh, special public forum trying to gather information that would draft a good resolution that could be submitted to this commission. And Mr. Dever, I pretty much continue to agree with you, I think so. Uh, after exhausted efforts, we've, uh, basically reached that end, I ask you, uh, please both public and industry. And, uh, fortunately, on behalf of this county and every other county, uh, Governor Lee has requested that anything that's still to be done by outside commissions, I understand, the effects of solar, uh, farms and their effect on the rural areas. So it was decided that probably it would be the, uh, the planning commission, instead of banging their head in, still finding great despair between public opinion and industry requests, that, uh, we refer to the state to define what their expectations, because they have already ruled in on a couple of major things such as, uh, your, your tax rate applies and how one of the commissions, uh, set aside after construction. So, uh, I think the resolution, uh, that I read from the state suggested that they look at the financial effects and all the other things, and they come to have a standard that is a path without resolution, and wouldn't have to go through so much trouble as of trying to bridge the gap. Following up that, Andy Shelton, uh, brought forward the new business to our planning commission, a moratorium resolution. This resolution is temporary amendment to the zoning ordinance and was passed unanimously by the planning commission. Uh, is my understanding, Andy Shelton has submitted reasons for the resolution according to documents to the county commission. Okay. Uh, there is no statutory or lawful public hearing requirement by the planning commission, does a public hearing and legislative body is required tonight. So the same little process we just ran through for the custom slaughterhouses, to, uh, back up.
When did you say the state is talking about this?
Uh, they've already issued the, uh, the, the order. They are scheduled to have a limited order out by September of twenty-three.
I know. What does that do to the permit to be ordered?
Uh, so that's a good question. You're currently, uh, in design office, you have two permitted, uh, locations. One is on Mecklenburg, it has received its, uh, building and occupancy permit, and, uh, weather permit, they would already have this reached.
So we pass that, and let it go.
Yeah, we cross that over. Uh, the other one is the, uh, Greenfield, uh, J. Two thousand and, uh, Hickory Valley, that has passed the Board of Appeals for land use permit. That's where they reside, they have not yet requested a building permit.
So we have not issued them a permit?
They have not requested a permit, so thus, no, we would not have issued it. And the only other one on the radar is the one that Mr. Kirk, here, might even probably answer a lot of questions, that TBA and VBA are working on economic development, have two brands, they do such things, which, uh, to, uh, fund. Those are the only three that are on our radar, and so, accordingly, if anybody wants to look, TBA has a document out there for this all that are active on the portal, and if you go look at TBA's portal now, it lists those three projects. One completed, one permitted for use of the pit of land, that are, uh, be, be able to be, and one yet to be requested.
All right, what's it gonna do if one, if they, if we pass that?
Which one came by far?
The one in Hickory Valley.
The one in Hickory Valley, again, if you look at the status of the one in Hickory Valley, they have it as this determined use. We are awaiting a submission review of the final plan. If that was approved by the planning commission, they can then proceed to permit request a building. And speaking of their asking, like Mr. Fleming, who had more to do. They have not questioned. That they had not submitted their final plan, and to submit your final plan, you're not allowed to request a building permit, because with the final of your ability to. That planning committee will go through, quote, these, uh, I think just the planning commission at this stage will approve them. Once it was approved and recommended by the planning commission, they would then submit through all of the requests useful for building them. Are they the only one that has not? They are the only one with a pending use application permit approved, pending the request for a building.
So if we pass this, can they come next week, what will that do?
If we pass this moratorium in the context it is, and they submit a plan to the planning commission, I would think they would not be given pending the outcome of the order, state in light of what the state is willing to do.
Do we need a, uh, do we need a motion, and then?
Yeah, more discussion.
During the discussion, then we can move in a public forum, different sides here that want to, uh, address this issue. And we think that's proper, and, uh, okay. Mr. Pierce, are you, uh, you're, you're asking for?
I'm asking for a motion to suspend legislative session that we're currently in, go to a public hearing.
So would.
So would.
I think we need to move. This is being moved now.
Fayum?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantum?
Yes.
Hensley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Canmore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
LeDeer?
Yes.
Miller?
Hope?
Yes.
Sane? Vickers? Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
And we are now in public session. We have here, yes, um, anyone that would like to speak, and, uh, the first, only agenda is Mr. Jonathan Fleming. Mr. Fleming, you're here, yes, sir.
Thank you, kind of, thanks. And, oh, I'll try to be quick, I know it's late, you've been here a long time, so, um, I appreciate Jim's explanation. I represent Radio Energy and Hickory Valley Solar Farms, and it took a little late, we are approved by the board's only, because I'm gonna talk about three things. Um, I'm gonna try and slow down, too, I have a lot to say, but I just wanna keep this moving, so. The, in, the, I'm gonna talk about our project briefly, just so you have context, and in response to your questions, Commissioner, members. I'm gonna speak about the opportunity the county has with solar to help keep taxes low, and we've done a survey in the county that had a third party, party to carry out, and I'll bolster here, talk about that. I'll focus on our project, uh, our council will be here to talk about a proposal to you briefly, and I'll bolster, we'll speak briefly about the survey, and you can use the information on our research in the county. Before I start, I'm sure you've heard a lot of concerns about solar in the county, I'm gonna go ahead and address a couple of them I've heard a lot. I've had some tough questions from many of you in my meetings with you, with the mayor. Uh, one of the terms I've heard is that the solar panels are going to leach chemicals into the soil, and that's going to contaminate the site over the course of the project life. I have a study here from the state, Earth Row and State University, that I'm gonna lead with county clerk. I sent it to Samu, she instituted the RAS, so I can send you a copy that shows and concludes at the end, the ninety-five health and safety impacts, and utility scale, P E element are noted. And it addresses leaching issues specifically, that solar panels are subject to T C L P testing and leaching, uh, of toxins in the soil, it's something that is covered by EPA testing, and then not, not above the threshold that we consider leachers. The second thing that we're going to address are concerns about land restoration, the solar farm, uh, solar farms are now subject in the state of Tennessee to a law that was passed by, based on the current administration requirement to post bond to store the land at the end of the, the solar purchase life. That was, I can pump that in sixty-six, I can send that to you, I have all of the, I guess I can give you the information on that. Our project is bound by, uh, a project of post bond, for post bond to cover the restoration of property, and the benefit of that, um, solar reverse, in response to those concerns, is that land can go back into agriculture. Whereas if you were to do some other sort of use on that property part of agriculture, it's permanent, solar farms tend to use it back into agriculture. So those are the two objections that I just wanted to address briefly. The main point I made to the commission this evening is the opportunity we have in this county to keep taxes low through the revenue that comes from solar farms. Our project alone will generate between six hundred and six hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year in tax revenue that goes to the county. Property taxes making us overnight the largest property taxpayer in the county. That's a lot, that's increasing the tax collected by the county from property by six to nine percent per year. You heard tonight about P M S needs, about building maintenance needs, about budget change of the landfill. The opportunity that this commission has to increase the tax base and put it in a position to avoid having increased taxes potentially in the future. That's an opportunity we want to make sure we can safely. How do we do that, and how does that affect our project? As you, you asked about Mr. Vickers and Jim Slade, our project has been approved by the board's only appeals and planning board. We're in position now, we need to make investment decisions in the coming months, uh, that will, are necessary for us to start putting down millions of dollars, we've already invested millions of dollars in this project. We need certainty from a regulatory perspective to be able to make those investments in the coming months, which are before September, I have to make decisions between now and June, uh, about investments, probably. We would propose to the county two things, two, two different o- options, instead of one, for you. The first would be, in response to the concerns in the county, maintaining current regulations and put a cap on the amount of solar that's allowed in the county. I sent a paragraph, I actually sent a document to all of you this evening by email, which I thought the parents can take, but I'm bringing the immune, but I sent it to you by email. Our first proposal is put a cap, put a percentage of land in the county that can be put in the solar, we would suggest three percent. If less than three percent of the land is used for solar, the county could potentially collect up to three million dollars in property taxes per year off that dollar. There's a tremendous opportunity for investment in America, in a cleaner, greener, energy-dependent America from solar energy, and this is an opportunity you have in your hands. If however, the county consists on the authority, we would ask that at least in that authority, you include language that affirmatively protects that the projects that are already been approved are subject to the regulations when they approve. That would give our project the regulatory certainty we need to carry on with our investment, knowing that the county is going to reassess the rules in September. The state's already reassessing the rules, so you have no control over that, and it would give us an opportunity to continue this investment and protect the opportunity to bring that six hundred thousand dollars a year grabbing into the coffers of our department. And that's all, I'm gonna pass some mic quickly to John Cooper, who's our counsel, and, and then I'll bolster stuff up, uh, briefly to introduce, introduce results for our, our research.
Good evening, I'm John Cooper, attorney for Greenfield, um, when you first say I was a full-time attorney, full-time attorney for a county legislative body in Tennessee for almost twenty years, so I very much appreciate the work that you're doing, and the hard decisions that you have to make. You don't get enough credit, and I want to say personally that I appreciate the work you're doing. As Mr. Fleming said, investors must have certainty regarding the regulations they're operating under before they can invest hundreds of millions of dollars in a project. I think any good business person would, would say the same thing. Uh, and as Mr. Fleming said, this company has already invested millions of dollars in this project, based upon the approvals that it's received from the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals, and then will be submitting the final plans or building permit. Um, so, so the two alternatives that rise to me to consider, first is to cap three percent of the overall property area in the county as a, as a max. That would be in lieu of a moratorium, that would be a new amendment to the zoning resolution to, to do that. We think that's reasonable and prudent, and would request that you consider that. Um, Mr. Fleming emailed you earlier this evening copies of the specific language that we're requesting, so you'll, you'll have time to review that, and we're asking that you would bring that back as an amendment. In the alternative, if, if the commission wants to pursue a moratorium, we would ask that the moratorium resolution be amended to specify that those who have received approvals for their project from a new standpoint from the planning commission and the board of zoning appeals, that those projects would be grandfathered in while the new regulations are, are being worked out. Again, that provides regulatory certainty, will enable the company to make these investments that support the economic growth and living of the county going forward. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, Paul Rivera. I am the vice president of a research meeting in public affairs from Houston, Texas. We have a number of clients in the government, um, private, nonprofit sector, covering energy, transportation, infrastructure, housing, healthcare, education. And every client is different, but what they always want to know is, what do their customers, or in the case of county government, when we work for them, what do the taxpayers think, and what do they believe? Hauling, which we do, is sort of like a blood test. We don't have to drain your body to know if you're sick, to know if you're healthy, or what you need. We need a sample, a little small sample, blood can tell us everything. In this case, we did a whole example of four hundred and eight people from Arden County. Some of the folks here probably were interviewed as part of the process. And as we surveyed people, we wanted to know what they think. So we asked questions in a structured way to try and understand how they would react to this particular, um, project. We looked at the census from twenty-twenty and made sure that the sample we pulled was representative of your county. We looked at age, gender, and the geography to make sure that we're getting people from all over the county, from everywhere. And here's what we learned, we got a lot of stuff, so I'll be very grateful. The first is, is that people in Arden County support energy independence for America. That sounds really easy, and of course, everybody generally supports that. But what we did is, we did it in the context of what's happened with energy prices right now around the country. And we asked people if they farm, that what we should do is make it up energy independence through the lens of diversification of sources, hitting outside just the carbon box, looking at alternatives. And eighty-three point seven percent of folks here in Arden say yes, they support that. We then asked questions specific to solar. We talked about how Tennessee already gets a majority of its electricity from sources other than natural gas, oil, and coal. Right, sixty percent of your energy in Tennessee comes from hydro or from nuclear, and we asked, do you think, as we continue to diversify, could solar be a part of that mix? Sixty-nine point six percent of folks in Arden County said yes. We then described this particular project and asked people if they had heard about it. Fewer than a third of the people in Arden County said they had heard about this project before we asked them about it. And now there are a lot of opinions that people have about it, and what we tend to see is that the loudest, who is getting the most attention, but we do know that a lot of folks didn't know much about it, and they had questions. So, what's very interesting to us is by the end, we presented a bunch of arguments for and against different alternatives, different viewpoints. Sixty-three point four percent, big number, said they would vote for the project if it was up to them. If it was their vote, would they support the project? And sixty-three point four percent said yes. And this cut across every region of the county, all racial groups, age groups, gender groups, all departments, people were supportive. Now, when we put the arguments in front of people, there are still some very real concerns that people in Arden County have. Those concerns are about what happens to tenant farmers. Those concerns are about what happens to the neighbors who are next to us, what's their view gonna be like, is it gonna be clear, is something that happened to them? What happens to the property values of neighbors, do they go up so much that now people can't pay their taxes? These are legitimate concerns, but they're offset by the benefits. These are legitimate concerns, but they're offset by the benefits that were presented, honestly, fairly, in the sense of the six hundred some odd thousand dollars a year in tax revenue that comes to the county without adding more services that are needed, because once it's built, it just sits there. Doesn't need water, doesn't need roads, doesn't need police, doesn't need fire, doesn't need any of those things, just sits there. The benefits that, that, that come from the impact on consumer prices. We all know, we all learned this in school, right? Supply and demand, more supply helps us meet demand. The care that is taken with site selection, less than six percent of the land here in Hardin County could hold something this big. Right? It's a very small place within your county that is close enough to transmission lines, far away from schools, far away from people and their homes and regular businesses. There was a lot of care in selecting those locations and to try to be as less, as least disruptive as possible. And then the last part connects to the reality that we're in a growing world, in a growing economy. You've got to hope completely, just look at the prices, they're all going up. The need for more supply is real, right? The Blue Oak project is a neighbor, neighboring county, so it needs a lot of power. And what that means is that everyone else is going to face increases in their rates unless we find some way to generate more. This is clean energy and it will work for your county. And how do you take the questions afterwards, anybody else? Thank you all, thank you.
Mayor Vann?
Yes.
Mayor Vann, okay, would you like to speak, so we'll get your line down here for, uh, for public comments on the solar?
Okay, well, I, I wasn't prepared to speak on this particular subject, but I was wanting to address the.
Sure.
Okay.
Mayor Vann?
Mayor, I think you only discussed solar, but.
The, the, uh.
I mean, that's what we're.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I just had, um, I just wanted to highlight something, so that's why I sat and I got involved in this. I just wanted to highlight the event that's taking place, uh, but I was the one that this, for this particular address.
I said, uh, go ahead, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, okay. Well, really, I, I was, uh, and thank you just for a minute, uh, Mayor Bosson. I just had some questions and I just wanted to highlight the event that's going to take place here in Baltimore. At First Methodist Church and I hope in that order, because this was.
That, that would be out of order, um, uh, 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 not for what he's addressing. That would come later in this.
Yeah, okay, I signed it up to speak after the meeting, when we opened it up.
Right, that.
Oh, for, oh, for, okay, this is a welcome form, Mayor, I'm sorry. I thought that was a different one, yes, sir.
Okay, so I can wait until you back in the session.
I had to open a different, I had to open this one, so.
No, no, okay.
I apologize.
All right, thanks.
We've got, uh, is your, Mr. Cooper or Ms. Cooper?
I, I already spoke, I was.
Okay, you're with, you're with Mr. Flinny? All right, it looks like the last one that we had is Mr. Kurt, Tony Kurt.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and County Commission. I just wanted to give you a little benefit of D E A's decision for our partnership with Solar Town Ranch and our solar farm. We, we're one of the, the metal butt solar farms, three point four five megawatts, which is a small farm, covers about eighty acres. But it supplies thousands, three hundred five hundred homes in our county. Um, it is a great benefit for what Solar Town Ranch, their first best operation. But what this farm is doing for us, we've done a thirty-year lease with them. They own the farm, we buy the power farm, do a G game program, some flexibility program, where we are able to buy, buy five percent of our loan from somebody else. So in doing so, we've done a thirty-year contract, which is going to save me between a hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred and thousand dollars a year on our power costs. Which in line, lets me keep my rates stable, as low as possible for my customers. Uh, not only that, like they talked earlier, you're going to get the tax revenue from the land. Um, they're kind of using how they keep their bank instead of, uh, instead of putting chemicals on their properties, they use sheep to medicate their property. They're, they're sowing the ground, they've got the grass growing now, they're planting trees around it. And then when it gets high enough, they're going to bring sheep out and they're going to medicate the farm with sheep. No chemicals, no cut, mowers, these things, they're going to use sheep to add to the farm's revenue. Um, like I said, it's going to save us between a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year on that farm. The other fifty megawatt farm that's been proposed, we also as a partnership with Solar Town Ranch, they're going to sell that directly to T D A. Your benefit will be the tax revenue you get off that. My benefit will be that they will pay me to upgrade my substation in Ebron at the price of like two, two and a half million dollars. And what I think comes from rate payer money, it will come from me borrowing money, but Solar Town Ranch is going to be ready for that. So it's a savings all around for me and my rate payers and it, it's, it's, it's a win for us to be yet. So thank you very much again. Always, I'd like to ask them, I'd like to. I was sheep don't go up. What, sheep don't go up? All, all my don't up.
Thank you, Mr. Kurt. And Mike Mitchell, if you want to speak on the solar issue, I've got you here. Mr. Senator.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to clarify, was there a motion passed and seconded for this thing, or if we just go straight to public hearing? Has there been a motion made, or is this motion going to be public hearing, or the motion is actually made? So we just in public hearing, the motion is not being made to adopt the solar resolution, uh, for the solar moratorium, yeah, so. Have you voted here and you can, uh, if the rest of the night is doing, I don't make the motion.
Yeah, if there is any, there is, there is no motion on the floor for any type of resolution.
Okay, I'm just, like, I'm just trying to clarify, the substation you talked about, is that the substation for the existing Solar Town Ranch?
It's, it's, we got a new substation already. They've paid the Solar Town Ranch that.
Oh, so one on that one.
Just be on one point.
Okay. Okay, appreciate that, uh, clarify, I'm just making some notes here, um, based on previous conversations. Uh, Council on Commissioners question of how's this going to affect independent, uh, permits that are already in range, okay? They're asking to amend this thing already. They have vested rights, okay? But here, your brother's farm has already been given a permit of use only. Okay, so they have vested rights, whatever, whatever within the place at that time, it's been made. We don't stand, no matter what you do, the only thing that can affect them is if they lose, pretending long street that has been filed by some city. And then we take them back, so that's why they're, we do have a doggone hunt in regard to that. But, you know, they, you know, they, they presented something, they're going to just beat all the crap here and it's reached out. But so, for that reason, that's the only way, they already got that's the right of state law protects them under the existing, on the pre-existing stuff. So if they win, you know, there's nothing holding them back like that. They can proceed today, but I'm sure they're already trying to obtain the financing that they're concerned with, so. Um, the economy, it's already six hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. I thought I had somebody at the, the Taxation Association Office that says that out of all farm, a while back, I think it's quite that high, maybe it was. But keep in mind, these six hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, every one of these contracts, on every solar farm that I've ever read, they, on these leases, they have the ability to turn this over and sell it by contract, nothing you would know about in the D E A. The D E A takes over any of the solar farms after they're building. We get zero tax dollars based on that at the long term. They get the land back to fifty-five percent, but that's it. So you keep in mind, they can develop this project and they want it to go to an operation, they have the right to do whatever they want to, their contract. Because don't go just fine, that this, this, we're going to get these thirty years of, of stuff coming in, you know, because when D E A takes over federal energy authority, all these things go to zero. I don't care what's on there, that's just the way it works. Uh, so I know we need to set certainty, and they should get the certainty for, uh, to be of the investment. It's about the only business I know of that, if you don't come to get a project approved with your finances lined up. You're in here to get your foot in the door and get everything on stop and then you take a year or two to get financed. That's kind of the whole process, it's just, it was beaten, our plan was up. They have been through the wringer this last year on this issue. I was, I, I was actually, too, in December, expecting the planning commission to take a totally different move on the resolution. And then this board has already been, been approved, I was hoping it was going to get passed and put some better gun laws. And it didn't go that way, and this resolution, this moratorium was suggested. I wasn't necessarily for the idea, but then I think about it and I researched it and, and I've taken Mr. Sheldon's reasons for doing this. And I'm going to have to tender her, this is the best possible action I think this board can take at this point in time. Federal check, we're ten forty-three, the general assemblies have the same issues as this county. The general assembly, state general assembly, has decided not to pass a template for the solar zoning ordinance, and for counties to have to deal with it until they get a report from the Taxation Committee. It's a very good committee, you never tell anything about it, they will do it for a while, they'll do it like solar, don't like solar, whatever. So if the state is not willing, and the general assembly, this one just been released, the general assembly, he signed it, I was there when that was made, he signed it in May. If the state's not willing to go in here and pass statewide solar zoning order until they get more information on the impact of solar. Yet we certainly don't need to be dealing on our own, so why not take a breather? We're not voting on whether to like solar or dislike solar. That's not, I know these, these, our presentations sound good, what people want, that's not like we're here to do, like we're here to take a, a yes or no vote on a solar moratorium as was presented and approved by the energy. Nothing more, nothing less. Um, this is just a temporary, put everything on pause, any pending stuff, it won't affect the Solar Town Ranch project on Mecklenburg Drive. It will affect Ringo Energy unless they lose the lawsuit, you know, and that, who knows when that's going to get heard? We may like have something, who knows, we don't know what the, what the pending application is. I will let you know that our county zoning resolution was passed for this board in August of two thousand and fifteen, and it was a terrible definition. So it didn't line up with the state, this was brought to our attention in the vote for one that was going off the sale last month. Um, we had issues in the county, we only had three solar farms in here, one is in Whacka, one is in, in Solar Town Ranch being constructed now, one is proposed. The Whacka project went through the process without planning review, should have been a lawsuit there, wasn't. Solar Town Ranch, no planning review, back in May of last year, got a D E A approval, the public was locked out of that meeting. I was one of them, I was personally escorted out of this building. Five people, which four of them are here today, was here at that meeting and walked out and not even allowed to attend the meeting, which they were approved. That would have been another lawsuit. And then you got the Henry Relling, is in range, I think is a test. Put it on hold tonight, the best thing you can do is just ask the issue to put everything on hold and, and, and for those reasons, like I said. Andy Shilton, I think, has submitted to y'all all the reasons that we've discussed through all these meetings, and, I mean, this has been a monthly thing, really. They, they are working to get through this, I'm not against solar, I think, I think nobody's proposing getting rid of solar. It's just we need to know how much, what needs to be done, they need time to do, but the state before it come out, let's see what the state is going to do. The state may come out here a year from now and say, we want all counties to do this. At that point, we just do what they say, they're trying to run for the table, give them a chance to do it. There are no genuine applications, that's at three o'clock this afternoon, other than what we've already talked about, and they've all been very successful. So that's what we did, it's going to affect them, is if possible, the lawsuit on Ringo. And if I understand, they feel pretty comfortable about the lawsuit, so if that's the case, shouldn't have anything to worry about. So that's my public comment, then, um, any questions for me? Um, I'm setting my door, I'm answering any questions you got.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
You commented that, uh, T D A could possibly buy the solar farm, take it over, is that correct?
Yes.
To your knowledge, how many farms has T D A purchased in the last ten years?
T D A is not, this is a federal energy policy we're talking about, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I need one, it's all I have.
Yes, yeah. But at this point, T D A and, and federal are not doing this. They, these, these, these solar entities that we're doing now are basically doing the legwork of the federal government. So federal policy, they're not, they're not prepared to take that political stand and say, T D A, you can initiate any domain, or we're going to throw enough money that you go out here and buy all this land and put it under, so. It will be, so, I mean, under T D A's authority, at some point, it's just going to be a question of how big of, of network they build before it becomes part of the grid. And we're just going to, it's just going to be a way to end, and we, at that time, we'll go.
So your answer is?
No, nothing, I've got to know of that, yeah.
Okay.
But that is, that is what, that is how it consists of, set for. Got to get them in here somehow, and I, and I, the disclosure, I'm, I'm carefully invested, so I believe that we need alternative energy sources. I will invest in solar as long as we don't be stealing money out of them. I love that, it breaks the equation of everybody else. But I'll tell you, it's, it's got its barriers.
Thank you, sir, we have, uh, three more guests there, uh, Mr. Field, or am I saying that correctly? I can't actually read that, is that the?
Mr. Maury Hill.
Sounds interesting, you have the folks.
Well, thank you so much, uh, my name is Maury Hill, and I'm with Solar Town Ranch, uh, the developer of two of the projects that have been, uh, discussed here. And first, just want to say thank you so much for all the time and energy you all put into trying to get this right, the solar regulations. I know Jim has about ready to block my number, um, but it's, they're, they're all are taking this seriously. Uh, so one, first, Jim reckons three projects are in the queue for a little bit. One being a project on Mecklenburg Drive that is complete and weather, bad weather, with large floodwater on it. Uh, and then two is Ringo's project, uh, and the third was our project, El Peabody, the fifty-five megawatt project. And, um, we would like to propose that, uh, the moratorium is amended to exclude projects that have a current contract signed. So, uh, this moratorium would essentially fix this project for us, but we already have the contract, essentially a power purchase agreement, P D A signed with T D A for this project. And so also want to dive a little, a little bit into why, uh, why that's not a great thing. Um, one thing that separates us from some of the, some other solar developers is we buy the land on our projects. So I think we were talking about, this leased land could get sold to another developer to operate if you sold to T D A. But we buy it on, after all of our projects. Um, so when we buy the land, we become not only a member of the community, but a taxpayer, as has been established here. Uh, and I don't have figures like the ones that John told us, starting out, we're not quite there yet, but I can comfortably say millions of dollars in tax revenue over the course of the project, which is typically about thirty years. Um, and also want to highlight that, these projects, we are real users of tax services for our lifetime. Once the project is built, we don't drive on the roads, we don't send kids to school, we don't check folks out of the library. We are there and are paying taxes for thirty years for the duration of the project. And again, we own the land on almost all of our projects, but we will be owning land on these projects. Uh, so the moratorium is proposed, because of the timeline, we wouldn't be able to meet the contract that was signed with P D A to deliver our energy. Uh, so we are asking that there is a carve-out for projects that are already under contract. Now, I'm going to have to be backed up here by, uh, one of our lead councils, Ms. Madison Ames, but, uh, that's a general overview. And having answered your questions, you all have my, yeah. idea.
Any other questions?
How many acres is that, Eva?
It's a fifty-five new one project and it's a hundred and sixty-five megawatts site, but we aren't building all of it, we're only using five hundred to six hundred acres.
We already bought it.
We did not buy it.
How many total acres? Was that your question?
We've only bought eight hundred and sixty-five total acres.
Eight hundred and sixty-five, and you're proposing to use five hundred?
Probably build on five hundred to six hundred, but it depends on our final decision. We have toys on land, timeline is long, we'll see.
You propose, you had a contract.
We have a contract signed with TDA to deliver the energy to them.
But you had it without owner?
Sorry, for the owner? We have a under lease option right now.
Is that?
Yes. Sorry, under, under lease option right now.
Would you buy it for building or anything like that?
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ames?
Hi, my name is Madison Ames and I'm the attorney for Silicon Ranch. And I just want to add the things that Mr. Kirk pointed out with VEA and the economic development impact to the county. My other point when I'm not doing solar zoning is I also do economic development work, pilots, those kind of projects. And one thing that is so important about communities that I come to and see all the time is their reputation in the business community and are they a business friendly place? Are they a transparent place? Are the regulations clear? And I think that that's something that this community is committed to getting by with solar. Jim and I have worked with Jonathan and others on, in the planning commission, towards I mean, Phil's trying to get a resolution, him or her, that would be beneficial to industry and allow us to operate as well as protect the interest of hard county taxpayers. One thing to address, the TDA, just right off the bat, is the TDA's purchase option. Silicon Ranch also uses their equity in this land as part of their financing for the other projects. So Silicon Ranch by design is kind of prohibited from selling their projects as easily as maybe another land does or could be for any other type of industry. One item that I think doesn't get a whole lot of say is how, I mean, Todd, Todd, excuse me, is upgrading the infrastructure grade. VEA is gonna receive a two-point-two million dollar benefit with no tax or with no rate increases or no fees incurred by VEA taxpayers or VEA rate payers. It also is going to provide the, the community an opportunity to receive all of the funds from this tax money to be spent in any way possible. Doesn't have to be spent on us, it's been hit, it's been hit on a thousand times. No, no fire, no rescue, no water, no schools, no libraries. The risk to Silicon Ranch is enormous on this project as well as to VEA and the defaulting on TDA's project. When TDA contracts direct pay projects, they are contracted for a specific economic development project. So the, TDA bids the project, they award an audit fee to a solar developer in mind for a development partner that TDA then has contracted with to guarantee power to this company that is unnamed, at least to me, but is known to be an economic development driver in the community and wants and needs this power. And so allowing this to, allowing our amendments to moratorium to just also allow for this contract to be honored with TDA would provide our company the contractual protection that we would need to be able to move this project forward under the same regulations that we have now. And if those also needed to be tweaked in the moratorium language, I think that we're happy to do so and to work with the community, to work with the community exactly, and the amendment would need to go back to the planning commission anyway. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all have about this project or about the consequences of the moratorium on the community as well as just on economic development overall in West Tennessee.
Any questions? Let me ask, please, real quick. Do you have, you were talking about the amendments, do you have an amendment ready? Do you have anything to propose that you've given to the commissioners already?
We have not given it to the commissioners, we wanted, we ran it by Jim and as well, we have sent it today off the counter and that is, that is where it stands currently.
We have one, just about a week or two.
Okay, do you have that?
Yeah. And that we just allow for exemption for TDA contracted projects. That, and that would be a cutoff and as of today, with the interconnection, it's just a free project in Harden County that we won't spend.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question that is maybe for Jonathan Clay. Does Ringo have any amendments available for this?
I think John does.
Yes, sir, we do have two alternative amendments. Those were emailed to you earlier, kind of right at the start of this meeting, wanted to propose the idea and then give you time to reflect on the amendments, but you do have the language that has been submitted.
And those were, I believe you had mentioned, are two options, so three percent cap on for the land. And then the other one was to include already permanent projects, I believe, was that the second? Or there was an option, either or?
Yeah, either or, yeah.
Is there anybody else on there? Patrick? Patrick, okay.
I don't believe it's the council.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. You don't have to be on the list, it's just a list, it would pay. If you'd like, this is public comment.
Pardon me, I'm Jim Mitchell, I'm a third generation owner, live in the Harden County Alamo Land and I also got Tucson is coming on, I'm a young one. I didn't come here to nice speak, I come here to, but I hear all the, the stuff is coming on about the, the solar stuff. I'm not against solar. Matter of fact, the farm on Mecklenburg where that solar plant is at, I would work on that land, it's time to come on. The landowner asked me about it, thought it was a good idea. It was right around the surface, I thought it was small, wouldn't affect anybody, my housing up there around, and I thought it was a good idea. But when I hear they're talking about three percent of part of the county going into, to solar pounds, that's what I, that's open. That's a lot acres. And the majority of what is there, one is land that is open. So it is easier for them to put a pound in, and let's. We all want to be Christian, but guys, I think we want something else done too, when we want to sit and listen, look, and enjoy the Christmas, because when these farmers in this county, it's gonna take, they're gonna make millions of dollars going into our, our time here. We as farmers spend multiple millions of dollars in this county. We affect a lot of businesses, I spend money and the majority of all of the businesses in this are involved. And I just think that when they pass this moratorium, as it is presented to y'all, and let's get some ideas about this, look at it and see what we really need to do for this county, not for the people that's out of the state, just when they put it up. These towns, y'all, are great people and I appreciate your time to do that. But let's look at this on for Harden County, of the people in Harden County. When we lose that many acres, add up for those in this county, we're losing farmers, we're losing people that creates jobs. This is not gonna create jobs in this county. We hire people, we use people in this county. And I would just appreciate if y'all would consider voting for this one for as presented to you, so that we can think about this and get our minds wrapped around it with great kindness.
Thank you, sir. And any others? Patrick?
I'm okay. Thanks for pointing.
It's open, go. Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, commissioners, good evening, neighbors. I'm Lisa and my husband's prodigal genius. We're actually the farm that's, we're gonna be surrounded by solar panels if this happens. It is what it is. I just wanna say upfront, first of all, ask the independent surveyor, something I heard him say, that he used the twenty-twenty census to verify the citizens that were in this county to do his, his survey. We moved here last year, we were not here, so how did I get called? I can be corrected if that was incorrect information, but that's what I heard him say, so I don't know how I got called when I wasn't here in twenty-twenty. We just moved here last year. My husband and I are not against solar, we're actually very pro-solar. We're in the process of looking at solar systems to put on our property right now, with generator backups and that kind of stuff, so we can be self-sufficient. We ask for this moratorium because I think it's the right thing to do for the county. I think we need to be sure that we are, we have the right policies, the right procedures, the right regulations, the right laws in place before we go further, before we go further with our solar, the solar farms in this county. While this one in Lake Valley affects ourselves tremendously, I didn't come here, I, I came here to retire, we came here to be in the open farmland, we came here to farm. I grow produce, I did six acres of produce back in Kentucky, we had a six acre farm back here, we come down here, we bought a six acre farm. This year I'm doing three acres of produce, next year hopefully I'll be back up to six acres again and then maybe more. I didn't wanna look at solar. I bought a property in the middle of nowhere to be able to look at wildlife, to be able to look at open farmland, corn, cotton, anything that is here. But the moratorium is going to give this county the ability to make the right decisions. It might not change what's gonna happen in my neighborhood and with the solar farm there, that might not change anything, but it will change what is going to happen with the entire county. A three percent cap that was suggested maybe might be an option and it might be a good idea, is three percent the right, the right answer? I don't know that, that's for you guys to determine. Sounds very doable, but at the same time, we're taking valuable farmland. We're, there are so many thousands of people coming in this country every day and it's not just Harden County in Tennessee, but the entire country. If we continue to take valuable farmland, we don't have the resources to continue to produce, to be able to feed everybody. We take valuable farmland, we're just gonna keep disintegrating and we're gonna go backwards. I just ask for the moratorium so we can make the right decisions and be able to plan forward and plan ahead to be able to allow this county to grow.
I just have one thing to add, I know most of the people in this county get their energy from VEA. There are other energy sources for some individuals like ourselves who do not get, who are not supported by VEA. So anybody that goes into them does not help us at all. So just want you to think about that, there's not just us, there's other individuals in this county that are getting their energy from somewhere else.
Then if there's include the people on this list, but let me ask, is there anybody else that has not been heard? We'd like, this is what this is for, this is an open farm and we're, we're, we want you to be heard. I don't want anybody to lock that door and say, we didn't have a chance to be heard. This is your chance. Is there anybody that might say anything? Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
I'm like, well, we just, any other ones around here? You know, we don't really lose valuable farmland. When they get this moratorium going, get regulations on the solar farms, that's all Harden County's gonna be looking at. When it starts, they're gonna start going, I don't count them, then you gonna have no farmland anymore. But yeah, I mean, Harden County.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Lance? Is there anybody else?
Mayor, I need to clarify something, y'all, y'all got two things going and you're fixing it to do. The amendments that was brought by Silicon Ranch, the three percent, these would be solar ordinance amendments. They would have to go to the planning commission, get a review, then come back here, get scheduled for fifteen day notice, but the people are here today. Don't go adding a bunch of stuff and you don't even know what you're looking at here. So you don't have those two options at this time, even at this. Okay? So understand what you're here to do. You're here to vote on a solar amendment. You can amend that solar resolution, but not by putting a cap on something that should be in the zone resolution. And I don't know if they really intended on submitting that, I think they're all that. But that is the purpose of the moratorium, to give the planning commission time to get these types of amendments put into that order. That's what you're.
Can I ask why Mike gets to bully the commission and gives his people in the rest of us?
I apologize.
Jim's back here.
I'm gonna clarify with my boss, who's not there, we will not be taking any amendments. They will have to go back to the planning commission, recommended by the county commissioner and come forth, that is well understood.
There was a hand back there, back, that sounds similar, please. Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm very proud of you. Unlike most of y'all in here, I moved to this county. I wasn't born here, my family's not here, we chose to come here. We moved here, we looked and said, where do we want to retire? And we chose this county. Now, I don't know about the rest of you, but it just warms the heart of my heart that these time attorneys would come in and told us what would be the best thing for our county. Now, agree or disagree, Woodson, but I wonder, I said that the towns are all where, where are your neighbors? Do you think any of these guys are gonna be living within five years of this farm? I have a question, I have a good question to ask. You heard the expression, fools rush in? Well, we don't want to be foolish about this. It isn't gonna kill anything if we take just a little bit of time and look at the options. Moratorium, regular, common, let's give ourselves some time to make good, sound decisions of good information. And I'm a free enterprise person and I hope all these people make lots of money. I really do, because that's what keeps the wheels going. I wanna make sure that we do it in a proper way, that benefits our county in the long run. It is not always just about the dollars, sometimes we have to look at quality.
Thank you.
Hey, I'd just like to say, they've, the people from the solar companies have mentioned that once the solar farms are complete, that they don't lose any county services or the road or anything like that. They put sheep on it, I mean, somebody's gotta bring a truck in and a trailer out night and day, hauling sheep in and out, somebody's gotta take care of it. But the biggest thing is if there's a tornado that comes through and blows these things all over the county, who's gonna clean them up? If there's a fire, I mean, you see these windmills on fire out west all the time. So it's just something else to think about that was, that nobody's mentioned.
Can I say one more thing?
I'll come up here. I just wanted to clarify, I appreciate all the back and forth and certainly don't wanna tell you all what's best for you, I just wanna make sure our ask is clear, which is, we are not against the moratorium. I think it's smart, take time, get this right, listen to the state. We just want to make sure that the project is under contract, isn't killed. This, we have a willing landowner who wants to sell his land. We have a federal energy agency, TDA, who wants this energy and the project would be killed. So we're just asking to take a second with that before it's proven more. Just one second. Thank you.
All right, okay, yes.
You know, some of you guys, when you were elected, you went up to Nashville and went to the commissioners, cause you went, Commissioner Bell went. And one of the things they impressed upon you when you were there, if there's an urgency, it'll be an automatic rip. And one of the things they impressed upon you when you were there was if there's an urgency, that'll be an automatic red flag to you. Why are these people pushing so hard to get this done so quick? Because they know the state of Tennessee has got more resources than we do. And the state of Tennessee is going to educate themselves on solar farms better than we can. So once the state of Tennessee issues their recommendations, then I think our mechanic can pick and choose those specifications they want to put in the flag here. And I think they want to be grandfathered in, obviously, so that they will not follow any of those regulations because they understand they're going to be pretty severe. That's all. Thank you.
Is there anybody else before we move to, to move back into regular session?
Mayor, I might be out of place as a commissioner, but I'm on the governing board. I might have told one of the things because I've worked so hard on this. On this moratorium, there's one way to develop about the future, past, history, you know, the years to come. If we wait on the state and they pass laws that we not have to follow their law, we can't pick and choose again.
That is correct.
Okay.
When they say shall, it's not an option.
If we adopt and make amendments and do all this stuff, what, anything that we do, this fall, we may have to just completely redo everything. Because the law's going to change. It's going to affect us and we're going to follow it. So why not wait and see what it is? That's right. And we've worked hard on this mess. It's time to do something to get somebody above us or somebody to tell us what the law is we go by. Keep, get us, because old saying going to get us off the hook.
All right. Is there, since there's, uh, no other one to add?
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to move back into executive session. Back here.
And first and second, and, uh, any discussion, I think it probably will be, and, Mr. Conder, do we need, do we need to accept consent? We don't need a roll call on that. Just move into regular session, executive session.
Go back to the second.
Okay. All right. All in favor, take your five second. All right. Saying, uh, uh, now we'll go back in and we may have gotten a couple of the horse on that. Uh, but I think it's very clear what, um.
Well, mine will live for that.
So, so I apologize if we did. And certainly didn't mention, Mr. Perry, should you have the floor, sir?
Did we vote on the solar house?
We did.
Yeah, we probably showed them.
Yeah.
Uh, the other motion, uh, the planning commission, uh, seeks a motion to accept the moratorium that was submitted to be moved back.
Tell them.
And we have a first and second, any discussion?
I would ask a roll call.
No discussion. We will have eight, please.
We were provoked on the moratorium. Are the permits that are out, are we allowed or are we not allowed?
That's the question.
We're doing as is that you presented.
The moratorium that is submitted allows, uh, no additional permits issued.
Other than the ones that are already, or the ones that are safe.
Yeah, we got three solar. One is approved through the way we're done with sweeps and it requires no more program. The second one is approved through the board of appeals for land use to put and design a solar farm. And it's not requested a permit for building. And the third one hasn't even filled out the application, but they are contracted with TDA. So again, we approve this moratorium, then my office will approve no more permits because what, the divide we have as evidence of the night is once you build them, how high do you put the fences? How far do you put the setback? What does the gate look like? And what do the pretty little trees that wrap around it look like? And that's just the reality of all this debate. Because that's something. So when we approve this moratorium, that's going to accomplish all of that that the state says, this is what you shall do. And all due respect, it is no peonies shoes. When the state says you will and you shall, that's not a debate. So. We don't do something, let us go ahead and address it. Solar farms are not, they're everywhere. Here, this is the truth. There's only so many places that you can go. And it's not 3%. And I wouldn't approve, I wouldn't support that. There's only so many transmission handoffs that you can get on the grid. And to go beyond that, it will take TDA to up that, their grid. And they're not going to do that. So that's the way. We're seeking a motion to accept the moratorium.
And that's a recommendation from the planning commission?
That is a recommendation.
And we have the planning commission member here. Mr. Perry. All right. We have a first and second, saying no more discussion. We'll have a roll call, please, sir. Now, the clerk.
Bell?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
Dever?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Grantum?
Yes.
Enpli?
Yes.
Zinkin?
Yes.
Getmore?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Lozier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Pope?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And Ryan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor, that excludes my attention.
Yes, sir.
It was fine.
Yes, sir. All right, and, uh, we have already discussed this earlier from Bill, from, uh, Mr. Conder. We have no business to be brought before the commission at this time. Okay. All right, uh, quickly for announcements. Um, I'm here, yes, sir. Please, let me have your, please.
With this mediation coming up on the, uh, the, the, you do need to, uh, have the commission appoint somebody to go, to just pay a little mediation fee. I think they've got an excellent.
Is your recommendation from the commission?
I like your argument. I'm in the mirror.
Discussion on that. All right. No roll call for it on that. All those in favor? All opposed? All right. And then, uh, of course, let me see this. Yes, sir.
Do you think that is, if any business done there, we'll come back to this before the commission before we move on?
Yes, sir. Bring it up to someone. And then announcements real quick. Um, Hardin adoptable items, uh, they need volunteers. And, um, I want you all to be mindful of that. If you do have, uh, ladies provide a great service out there, they need to. And if you know anybody that would like to help them, uh, please go out and, and see, see what they do out there. And, um, our next commission meeting, February 21st. Mayor, I want to give you a chance, please, sir. Um, as, as our mayor of Wyckes, he is back to, uh, back to have some great things going on in Wyckes.
I promise you, uh, mine is less controversial.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to highlight something that's going to take place here in Balva on, let's see, it's going to take place February 8th. It's project assimilation. Some of y'all might have been through that. If you haven't, it's a good opportunity for you to, uh, actually look at some of the, now, we live among people every day that are in politics or at the politics line that are struggling to just make it through the week. And, uh, there's, there's no answer. You never know what person going through a mission walked in their shoes. And so it's an opportunity for you to see how a lot of people live. And it might force you to ask the question, what can I do? Or why should I even care? Well, uh, you know, a lot of the users know, um, theology, uh, at the tier, well, you know, uh, I think we should be concerned. All of us have a right to be concerned about those that live among us. And, uh, we live in a society now where there is less concern about the least of these.
Sir, Brown, please.
Uh, can we have order, please?
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor Biden speaking, and we would like to have his face right here for our guest, please.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
And I, I, so if you can go, this is going to be at the first meeting of this church, 218 West Market Street. It doesn't cost anything. It's an island of the experience. All they ask you to do is just register so they'll know how many people to attend. And, um, I've lived through it. It really is an island of experience. Our new mayor, Matt Tizzy, went through it a couple of years together. And we just hope that you will sign up and check it out so that you will have an opportunity to see how the other, uh, people live, some of the struggles that they have to go through on a daily basis. That's all I want to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Saying we're through, no other business before this commission, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.